Exciting times in Palm Springs, for sure. With all this development and with this incredible project right in the heart of downtown Palm Springs, which is very unique in that we have an arena proposed and a casino right in the heart of a city, which is definitely going to impact and be a game changer to the way we provide services. With my first slide, I had assigned staff to go to the Toyota Arena in Ontario, as it's very similar in size. Capacity is approximately 11,000 people. As you can see on the screen there, on the left there you have an overview of the Toyota Arena in Ontario and where the proposed arena is in Palm Springs. Again, a lot of similarities in regards to the arena itself, a tremendous amount of differences in regards to the location. What you see on the left here is quite a few available parking areas directly around the arena in Ontario. Directly below you see a road that kind of curves around the parking area. There's three lanes of traffic going in each direction from that arena. And what's very interesting and actually works quite well for their location is the proximity to I-10 freeway. It is a very short distance traffic resources to address the flow. Great. Thank you very much. So the only item on the agenda is consideration of a request by the Akuakayanti Band of Kewa Indians for an administrative review and conformity report for the Palm Springs Arena Project. And this is a public hearing tonight, and I sort of want to explain how we're gonna go through this process. We're gonna start with staff reports. There's a staff report out as part of the conformity review, and we'll have different members of staff do their reports. After each member of staff speaks, we're gonna then do our questions of that member of staff. So we don't mix public safety with parking and traffic because it'll be much harder to follow, I think, for everyone. So we're gonna take them in chunks. After that, the Oakview Group, the developer of the arena, is gonna be doing a presentation. There'll be questions, and once all that information is out, we're gonna have public comment. After public comment, then council will deliberate and ask any further questions. We want to get as much information out to everyone here so you have it when making public comment because it's really important that we have everyone. We're really gratified to see such a big turnout. This is such an important project moving forward. I want to just touch a little bit about what this is. So this is a conformity review. This arena project is on tribal land. The tribe is a sovereign nation, and they get to build what they want on their land. We have entered into agreement whereby they allow us to do a review and make recommendations to them to mitigate any impacts of projects they do. They can take or leave those suggestions. So the real focus tonight is on looking at areas where if it was a development on city property, we would ask for these from any developer. Because this is on tribal property, we can make suggestions on that. So that's really the focus of tonight's meeting. I did want to ask our city attorney just to briefly touch on sort of the legal rights here before we go into the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so as you mentioned, this is a tribe project. It is on their sovereign land. There are, you know, three types of lands. There's land held in trust. There's a loty land, and then there's fee-owned land that the tribe has. This is land held in trust, so we are limited in any conditions. We have no real authority to impose conditions. As you mentioned, we did enter into an agreement with them years ago. But as a sort of sovereign tribal government, they have the authority, the land use control and that authority. They do have this process, though, whereby contract, we meet and confer over these issues and provide our recommendations. But it is up to them which recommendations, if any, they utilize and the moving forward with the construction of the project.
Great. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to ask the city manager for a staff report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and good evening, everyone. I would just note that the staff presentation this evening, we're gonna start off with the police and fire chief making a presentation, and then obviously our planning director and traffic engineer, assistant city manager, is going to talk about some of the issues. And I would just note that it's been said that this, the basis of this is back to our 1999 land use agreement. And so this is part of the process we use for the development that the tribe will be using. And again, as noted, this was a courtesy, and so council will be making some recommendations of some items on some of the issues. That being said, I would just note that, you know, our partnership with the tribe goes back a significant amount of time. We've had a lot of projects we've done together. For example, they've provided funds for portions of Takwitz Canyon that we've redone. They provided funds for several other projects we've worked together. So we anticipate this is the first of a discussion ongoing that we're gonna have to mitigate any of the issues that we see this evening. So I would just note that this conformity report, it's intended to look at all the negatives, if you will. So we're able to prepare and look at the negative things that could happen so we can start the dialogue on the mitigation and the fixing them, if you will. And we do that in a partnership manner, and that's what we'll be doing in the coming months. So this is the first part of that discussion. So with that, I would like to ask the police chief, Brian Reyes, to step up. He has a brief presentation, and then we'll hear from the fire chief. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, and all those present today. Exciting times in Palm Springs, for sure, with all this development and with this incredible project right in the heart of downtown Palm Springs, which is very unique in that we have an arena proposed and a casino right in the heart of a city, which is definitely gonna impact and be a game changer to the way we provide services. With my first slide, we, I had assigned staff to go to the Toyota Arena in Ontario, as it's very similar in size. Capacity is approximately 11,000 people. As you can see on the screen there, on the left there, you have an overview of the Toyota Arena in Ontario and where the proposed arena is in Palm Springs. Again, a lot of similarities in regards to the arena itself, a tremendous amount of differences in regards to the location. What you see on the left here is quite a few available parking areas directly around the arena in Ontario. Directly below, you see a road that kind of curves around the parking area. There's three lanes of traffic going in each direction from that arena. And what's very interesting and actually works quite well for their location is the proximity to I-10 freeway. It is a very short distance. Traffic resources to address the flow going out of that location to I-10 is a very short distance. Also, you will note that directly around that arena, there really isn't anything within walking distance that's available. So people likely go to that event, attend their venue, and leave. And again, close to I-10, and they're on their way. Now, in regards to the Toyota Arena, it's owned by the City of Ontario. The city then contracts with ASM Global to manage the arena, and they also manage the Ontario Convention Center. All of the overtime at the arena is staffed by Ontario police officers. They did not add any additional officers to that police department. But we must note that that police department is 304 officers, so they can absorb handling all that overtime. They currently have one lieutenant, one sergeant, and an administrative assistant assigned to handle the arena billing, scheduling, and event planning and logistics. Staffing time for the arena consists of approximately 136 hours per month to deal with the scheduling, the planning, and logistics for these personnel. Ten to 15 of those officers are split between the sergeant and lieutenant. The administrative assistant usually spends approximately 120 hours a month to fill the overtime and handling of the billing specifically to this arena. Now, as relates to the Palm Springs location to your right there, a tremendous difference in regards to location. What you have there is an arena proposed right in the heart down, heart of a downtown, in which all the streets around it are one lane in each direction. Within a one-mile radius of that proposed arena, you have 71 restaurants, of which 65 serve alcohol. You have a tremendous casino right across the street, a cultural center, and a spa that will be opening soon. I do not see this location as one where people will show up, attend the concert, hockey game, and leave. There's a lot of available venues and restaurants and locations to go to within walking distance. In fact, of those 71 locations, the furthest one to walk to is 22 minutes. The closest is three minutes, with an average of nine minutes to each one of those 70-plus locations. A lot of options for people to come and stay after, after the event. With all those available options, it's gonna be very taxing on our resources, not only before an event but after, because again, it's highly likely that they're not just gonna leave town. They're likely to bleed into our downtown area and enjoy everything this incredible city has to offer within walking distance. Now, my next slide, I want to go into the staffing. Since the Toyota Arena is fairly close to what this arena is proposing in regards to events, regular events that do not have large crowds, do not have a history of issues, are staffed with at least two officers. Event examples are hockey games, basketball games, events such as Sesame Street or Disney on Ice. They will increase the numbers of officers based on attendance numbers if needed. In the past, they offered, I mean, they still do offer $2 beer nights, which were staffed with four officers. Recently, they reduced those $2 beer nights to two officers at the request of the arena due to the low frequency of incidents. This is currently on a trial basis. If they see an increase in issues or calls for service, they will raise it back up to four officers. Concerts with attendance of at least 7,000 or more are normally staffed with seven officers and one supervisor. This staffing could be the same for a concert with less attendance but have a high likelihood of issues such as concerts with a history of high alcohol consumption. Popular concerts with attendance expected at 10,000 or more are usually staffed with 10 officers and a supervisor. Now, keep in mind, that's just what's staffed internally. They have a full complement of security officers that handle 90% of the issues internally, but they still have this amount of staffing inside. Now, outside, when they have their 7,000 to 10,000 population in their events, they have an additional 12 to 15 officers just for traffic control to keep the flow going. Again, three lanes of traffic all the way around that venue and very close proximity to I-10. So it's gonna definitely impact our staffing in regards to not only in the event but also externally. We are proposing one police lieutenant, a sergeant, eight officers, two community service officers, and then obviously the necessary equipment for those, for those officers. Now, keep it in mind, this is not only for the immediate area of the arena, but we are talking about adding over 100 different events at this arena. We already have, if you look at my attachment on my memorandum, we already have 44 to 45 guaranteed events that we have year-round here that draw a tremendous amount of people that we're already staffing. And to add this, we will likely have to choose to staff internally and then probably contract out with neighboring cities to assist us with traffic flow on the outside, because we will, we won't likely not have the available officers to address that. So with that, I will sit down. In case you have any questions for me, I'll come up and address any questions or...
So does anyone on council have questions for Chief Reyes at this point? Yeah, we should do questions for each part. I think it'd be easier for folks. Lisa, do you? Okay. Nothing for right now. Thank you, chief.
Good evening, mayor, council members. So personally, I'm extremely excited for this project, the arena, because I plan on frequenting it myself, and I think there are a lot of great assets that it's gonna bring to the city. But as the fire chief, I have to be concerned about the protection of life and property. And with this arena, even though it's only 61 feet above grade, it's 25 feet below grade. It's 262,000 square feet, and it's going to have between 10,000, 11,300 individuals that could be attending any event at any time. So because of the magnitude of this, there is a greater possibility for a large-scale incident. So I'm not concerned about the day-to-day running on medical calls that occur in there or small incidents, rescue incidents, things like that that occur. I'm concerned if the facility, because of the nature and the history of these events and these large-scale venues, that there could be man-made disasters such as a bombing, active shooter, a hazardous material incident, and even arson. I'm also concerned if a natural disaster occurs while the capacity, they're at capacity or anywhere near it. And if an earthquake occurs, natural disaster, we could have a building collapse, and we would have a large-scale rescue and retrieval operation that we would have to respond to. So with either of these disasters, it would require either fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, or rescue operations. So the Palm Springs Fire Department's standard operating guideline aligns with the National Fire Protection Association 1710 guide, deployment guidelines, which are an initial dispatch of 43 firefighters. Each of the 43 firefighters are assigned specifically identified operational tasks. So there, it's not like you wing it when you get there. There are actual tasks that need to be performed. This deployment is referred to as a second alarm assignment in our operational guidelines. Currently, the Palm Springs Fire Department has 21 firefighters on duty at all times located at five different fire stations throughout the city. So for optimal life and property-saving efforts, it's time-sensitive. Therefore, rapid arrival times of the firefighters to begin these tasks is critical to the most optimal outcome should any of these large-scale incidents occur. So to accomplish rapid arrival times to the arena with a minimum first alarm assignment, I'm recommending placing one ladder truck and two fire engines at our downtown fire station currently located on Palm Canyon. Additionally, I'm recommending adding nine firefighters to each of the three shifts in order to have 30 of the 43 firefighters on duty at all times within the city of Palm Springs, not relying on outside agency mutual aid. Of those nine firefighters on each of the three shifts, it is reasonable to request the tribe contribute to staff one of the two fire engines on all three shifts. This would require, oops, excuse me, go back. This would require three fire captains, three fire engineers, and three firefighter paramedics in addition to the engines and the ladder. So the current fire station, as you can see, is the top picture in this slide, and the bottom is a potentially new station. The fire station would need to be rebuilt and relocated for the following reasons. One, a ladder truck will not fit in the apparatus bay at the existing station. The current station will not accommodate housing the increased personnel that would be assigned daily to the two engines and one ladder truck. And then expanding the current fire station to accommodate these two is not feasible. The lot size is too small, even if the vacant lot and restaurant land to the north were utilized, and the building's historic designation limits many design features necessary for the functionality of a modern fire station. The lack of space for apparatus drive-through capabilities is not an option on the current lot, and adequate parking space could not be accommodated if the fire station size were increased. So moving fire station number one further east to a location would place it more centrally for improved response times. So those are the requirements and the reasons why I put what I put in the memo. I hope that identifies it in more detail. And if either yourselves or the public have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Anyone have a question for the chief at this point? Chief, I do have one question. Just so I understand, I may have some more after, but you talk about more personnel on all three shifts, and given events are pretty much gonna be within one shift, what is, why does this cause a need for extra personnel in the other shifts?
Yeah. So 24/7, 365 is, is how we serve the community. And so we have to break that into three separate shifts. They work 48-hour shifts. They work 10 shifts a month for the 30 days in a month on average. Changes each month. Some months 11, some months 9. So, but it averaged 10. So in order to have the staffing, when you add one FTE to make the equivalent on all three shifts, which we call them A, B, and C, you have to add a person for the B shift and the C shift.
And they all need to be equivalent because?
Because they have, they have roles within assignment to the apparatus. So each of our apparatus, a fire engine or a ladder truck, is assigned, what I said up there, why I said three of each, is one captain, one driver titled and engineer, and one firefighter paramedic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anything right now? Okay, thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we'll go into a description of the project and talk about its conformance with the Section 14 specific plan, which is the governing document for this site. In terms of the proposed project, the arena will have a total of 252,000 square feet. The structure will be 61 feet as measured from grade. There will be a main arena. There will also be a practice rink, locker rooms, food and beverage concession areas, support spaces, and offices inside the building. There will be a public plaza on the south side of the building, which will serve as the primary entrance point for patrons of the arena. And then on the north side of the site, there will be a surface parking lot, which will accommodate a total of 650 parking spaces. In terms of the capacity of the facility itself, for hockey matches, there will be a total of 10,000 seats that will be available. For concerts or other entertainment there at the facility, it could accommodate as much as 11,265 seats. And suddenly, my voice just got very loud. In terms of the number of events over the course of a year, the applicant indicates that they will have approximately 107 events during the year. Of those events, 31 events would be at full capacity, is what they estimate, or about 30% of the events. The remaining events would not be at full capacity but would have crowd sizes of between 6,500 to 9,000 patrons. And so that gives you an idea of the use of the facility in terms of the number of times per year it will be used, and then also the capacity of it. In terms of the site plan, here you can see in the orange color at the bottom of the screen, that is the footprint of the building itself. It will be on the southern end of the site with the plaza to the south and then the onsite parking to the north. Looking at an up-close image of the footprint of the building, you can see the plaza area on the south. Again, the primary entrance for most patrons will be on the southern side of the site. However, there are VIP entrances on the northern end of the site. And then, and you can see up in the upper right-hand corner, there is a yard where they will be bringing in their trucks to unload equipment for the concerts and events, et cetera. And so that's the basic layout of the property in terms of the building itself. I have several images of the project. This is a view of the southern side of the arena with the public plaza in front. Notice the shading structure that extends over the plaza area. This is looking to the east. And then the opposite view looking to the west on the south side of the building with the public plaza. And then these two images are at the northeast and northwest corners of the property. In terms of the height, as I had mentioned, the building will be 61 feet above grade. One of the things that the applicant has done to reduce the massing of the building is to place two levels of the building below ground. And so 25 feet of the structure will actually be below ground and will only extend 61 feet above grade. And so what could otherwise be a rather tall structure because of the fact that they put two levels below ground helps to mitigate the impact of the overall mass of the structure. We analyze the project for compliance with the Section 14 specific plan, and note the following: that the proposed project complies with height and setback requirements. However, it does not comply with open space requirements. In the Section 14 plan, 40% open space is required for a high-rise building. Only 25% open space is provided onsite. We cannot count the parking area as meeting open space requirements. However, the plaza area does contribute to the open space. In terms of the parking, it does not meet the onsite parking requirement, and I'll get into the parking in a separate portion of my report to you this evening. In terms of the design standards or the design guidelines in the Section 14 specific plan, staff is of the opinion that additional articulation or modulation of the facades of the building is needed. While the design on the south side of the building provides a lot of variety and detail, looking along either the east or the west side of the building, we would recommend that the applicant look to do additional offsets in the building. Also, in terms of the design standards, minor modifications would be needed to the parking lot design. Those are rather minor things in terms of the design guidelines, however. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Fuller, who will talk about the traffic impacts.
Good evening. What I'm doing here is summarizing what is, if you've seen, a very voluminous traffic impact analysis. And essentially, in terms of trips that are generated by the arena, it comes down to determining and using some empirical data of how many people arrive in each car. And using the maximum capacity of the arena with a sellout concert, you essentially divide that by the number of people that are typically arriving in a car, and the analysis assumed two and a half people per car. And that gives you a total of 4,518 cars. of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighteen cars. Another assumption was made in the analysis that of those, there are some certainly that are arriving to the arena by other modes of transportation, with eighty-five percent of those arriving by car. And so that's how we get to the three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty trips. To give that some perspective, for the benefit of the public, I wanted to give some comparisons of some of the larger projects in my twenty-year history with the city. The biggest was actually the Walmart Shopping Center, and so that was back in two thousand and two. That center had a net new trips generated of ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty, with then the Home Depot or Spring Shopping Center close behind. The tribe's own Awakaliante Master Plan that was recently reviewed, to give that some perspective, included five-thousand trips that would be generated through the museum and the spa and the future hotel and casino expansion. So this, this arena falls close behind that. By distributing those trips through the city's street network and analyzing the events that occur on Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, they did determine that in the pre- and post-event hours, there will be certain intersections primarily around the arena that will have significant effects, meaning that those intersections will fail. There'll be gridlock and congestion at nine intersections in the pre-event hour and five intersections in the post-event hour, and nine different roadway segments. And in the, in the analysis that's been made available for the public, there's a full list of those street intersections and roadways that I will show you in a minute. For Sunday, similarly, there's nine intersections both before and after the events and two roadway segments that are identified as having some effects. I do want to note that those effects, again, are not permanent. They're considered temporary, which is a little bit different because these events are only occurring during certain times of the year, and those impacts are only occurring before and after those events. It's a little bit different than like the Walmart Shopping Center, where that traffic is just generally happening all the time and being generated by that project. So it's similar to, if you've been to any other stadium like the Chula Vista Arena, those effects are to be mitigated through appropriate traffic control measures to guide and direct the traffic to the event and after the event out of the area. So this was the list in the analysis that gives you the specific intersections. Most of them are stop-controlled intersections, a few are signals, and essentially, the mitigation in those cases will be traffic control officers to guide and direct the traffic to the event and away from the event after its end. And these are the roadway segments that we expect, based on the analysis, due to the additional trips, that there will be congestion on those roadway segments. And as we've recommended, this project will require a very detailed transportation management plan, which is going to be part of a project operation plan, which includes the parking management plan that Flynn will discuss. Some of the measures that's noted is the Oakview Group will, will provide some real-time traffic information with, you know, more updated and current technology. There's ways to show in real-time via the web and mobile applications where traffic routes are recommended, where parking is available. Again, the key to this is going to be having traffic control officers at every single intersection that's affected. I, I'm aware, and I've seen some of the letters that have come in recently, and I think some, some people were pointing out that one of the intersections that wasn't analyzed was Arenas and Caillou Segundo. And, you know, just because the analysis didn't identify that as a analyzed intersection, the point here is that any intersection that's going to have effects and will have traffic control officers, you know, to make this, this a success. Electronic message boards to direct traffic, and also pedestrians are also important, so having pedestrian routes designated with barricades and also having traffic control officers specific to those pedestrians and providing safe crossings for them as they exit the arena and go to other places in the downtown.
Let's see, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions for Mr. Fuller on traffic issues?
Go ahead. Councilmember Middleton.
Mr. Fuller, as we know, Indian Canyon and Gene Autry are frequently closed due to weather conditions. Did you do any analysis as to what the impact would be on traffic if, on the remaining streets, if we were to have a closure of Indian Canyon and Gene Autry?
The analysis did not. I did see that the analysis showed trip distributions for regional traffic coming outside of Palm Springs with, as I recall, most of that traffic, obviously, if it's coming from the west on I-ten, coming in off of Highway one-eleven, and if traffic's coming from the eastern Coachella Valley, it would likely come in off of Vista Chino or through Dyna Shore. So in this case, there's less traffic, except that traffic that's coming from the north that would utilize those roads, and so we hope that those incidents where those roads are closed won't be that frequent and won't, won't have an impact in that case.
All right. And as you and I both know, SEVAG and others are working very closely with RTC, RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission and others to alleviate the issues that we have with Gene Autry and Indian, but we have not found those solutions yet, and we're still working on them. The traffic studies where you're doing comparisons to the shopping centers, the distribution of traffic at a shopping center is over a much broader period of time. Do we have anything where there is a comparable short period of time where traffic is coming into the city, such as Festival of Lights Parade or other types of events where people are coming in for parades, special things going on in Palm Springs?
We, we haven't had any formal studies in that regard until now, so it's just from our experience with our police department on knowing how we have to dispel or disperse all of that traffic for those events where we have that similar experience.
All right. Thank you. There are no other questions. We'll go ahead and proceed and talk about the parking issues associated with the arena.
Councilmember Woods has a question.
There, I did not see a trip distribution plan in the report that we received. Was there one provided?
It was in the appendices to the traffic report.
Okay, so when somebody comes in, we're basically talking about, I think it was well over three thousand trips an hour before the arena during that hour, an hour after an event at the arena, and what percentage, do you know what percentage of that traffic would be on Indian, or excuse me, on one-eleven? Just because that's also just a two-lane road.
On Highway one-eleven?
Highway one-eleven, which, few of the intersections were studied in that. My concern is, I think the same as Councilmember Middleton, is the traffic distribution on one-eleven, if we're, if we're drawing traffic in from outside of the area, they would be coming in on either Indian, one-eleven, or Vista Chino, and I'm just curious how much of that was coming in on one-eleven.
I'd have to look at it, but perhaps when the applicant is available, they can, they can give you that detail.
Just one question. Just to clarify, this was the report we received from Oakview Group on traffic. We haven't done our own at this point.
That's correct, and one of the recommendations I included was the fact that we still need to, you know, drill down on this. As I mentioned, most of these impacts are considered temporary, but I, I'm concerned that there's some permanent impacts that might require some, you know, physical changes to some of the intersections. We've noted some recommendations to widen Alejo Road. Even today, I'm sure everyone here knows that sometimes you can get stuck on Alejo Road with cars turning left on Encelia or Segundo, so I included a recommendation that the project widen Alejo Road to create some left-turn lanes. But the, you know, we're recommending that we still do peer review of their study and look at their assumptions, and then identify whether some of the intersections warrant some permanent improvements to help make the traffic flow. One of the impacted intersections is Sunrise Way and Tamarisk, which is not signalized. So it, we're hopeful that we'll still have that continuing review and come to an agreement that all of the affected roads and intersections will be appropriately mitigated.
Agreed. Thank you. And just so the public knows, we had about thirty days to review, and so the city has not yet done all these plans because we had to respond within thirty days, but that's a continuing process that we plan to move forward.
With that, I'll go ahead and talk about the parking impacts relative to the facility. As I had mentioned previously, the proposed project does not comply with the requirement for onsite spaces and is approximately sixteen-hundred spaces deficient. However, to address this issue, the applicant has proposed an off-site parking program. In the off-site parking program, it identifies approximately twelve-hundred spaces that are on tribal properties within a half-mile of the arena site, and so these are owned directly by the tribe and could be made available for parking for the arena. In addition, the applicant identifies another sixteen-hundred spaces on both public and private properties that are within a half-mile of the arena site, including properties such as the convention center parking lots, which are used by the city of Palm Springs and other private properties. The applicant indicates that there are also on-street parking spaces available to address the demand. So again, they are proposing, and they're proposing an off-site parking program to deal with the deficiency of parking spaces onsite. In the backup materials provided, they show a diagram of the arena location, which is highlighted in green there towards the center of the map. The tribal properties that would be available for off-site parking are in yellow and include a surface parking lot on Caillou and Encelia, which has about two-hundred spaces, and then they also identify the casino garage, which is indicated in the report as having seven-hundred-and-forty spaces. Now, one of the things to take into consideration is that the casino will still be in operation during those hours, and so not all of those spaces would be available for the arena. So there are some issues there. The tribe also has two office properties that are located off of Taquitz within a half-mile, and those are indicated in yellow as the letters W and the letter X. The convention center parking lots are and U, shown in red here on the map, are also identified. However, there are problems with that in that the arena events may conflict with convention center events. They would have to enter into agreements, we would have to stagger those events with the arena. And then secondly, the west parking lot is not under the control of the city. The applicant would need to enter into an agreement with the owner of that property in order to utilize that site. One of the things the report states is the availability of the Downtown Project parking garage, which is shown in blue and the letter D there on the lower-left side of the map. However, because that parking garage is committed for the Downtown Project and for Downtown businesses, it would not be available for arena parking, and so we just want to make it clear that that would not be available as part of their off-site parking plan. We had an independent consultant look at their parking study that they provided to us. It was done by LAZ Parking. LAZ Parking had done a previous analysis for us in the downtown area at the request of the Hotel Owners Group, and so they are familiar with the parking that is available in Palm Springs and were well-qualified to analyze this proposed parking study. And they indicate that while they, there are adequate off-site spaces to accommodate the demand, if the applicant is able to enter into agreements with both public and private property owners, however, one of the issues is that arena events will impact our, one of our peak parking periods in the downtown area. There are essentially two peak parking periods. During the noon hour, that's where we see nearly a hundred percent capacity for the city parking lots and on-street parking in the downtown area, and then secondly, between six PM and nine PM during the dinner hour. It's anticipated that most of the arena events will occur during our second peak parking hour between six PM and nine PM. And so consequently, LAZ recommends a number of parking management and mitigation strategies that would be required if they pursue the off-site parking. In terms of the downtown lots, again, talking about our peak parking, there are a number of city parking structures and surface parking lots in the downtown core, not only the Downtown Project Garage, but the garage that is available at the corner of Indian Canyon and Baristo, and then a number of surface lots along Palm Canyon that are sprinkled throughout the downtown area. Again, it's important that we keep these open and available for the downtown businesses as they are intended to serve those uses, and so would not be appropriate for arena parking. In terms of parking management and mitigation strategies with the off-site parking proposal, number one is to redirect arena parking away from all city lots and garages, again, reserving those for downtown merchants and businesses. Also, because of the proximity of residential neighborhoods to the arena site, we would need to implement a residential parking permit program for those residential neighborhoods within one mile of the arena, so that we may retain residential streets for use by residents. In addition, we would need to implement on-street parking meters within one mile of the arena in order to reserve parking for downtown businesses and make them available for patrons of those businesses. There would be substantial costs to the city.
Let's all be respectful and let people get through these presentations. Everyone have a chance to make their comments.
There would be substantial cost to the city for doing these parking programs, and so consequently, we would ask that the applicant reimburse the city for the costs of installing the meters, implementing the permit program, and then there will also be ongoing costs associated with parking enforcement. Other mitigation strategies include the implementation of an angled parking plan in the Section fourteen area to increase the amount of onsite parking directly available to the arena site, also asking the applicant to coordinate with transit, hotels, and rideshare programs to reduce the demand for parking at the arena itself, implementing a real-time parking management app so that users of the facility would know where they could park and would direct them there, to deploy electronic message boards directing them to the off-site lots, and then to coordinate with the city on event scheduling so that we avoid arena events the same night as other events such as Village Fest and the major parades and events that we have downtown. So our preferred recommendation relative to parking issues is to ideally provide all the required parking onsite so as to limit the impacts to our businesses and our residents. One of the issues with that, however, by locating all of the parking onsite, it does not disperse traffic as well as an off-site program, so there are pluses and minuses that need to be considered relative to that. As an alternate to onsite parking, if that is not possible, we are recommending that they implement the parking management and mitigation strategies and the associated costs for that. One of the things that I want to mention is a question has been asked relative to environmental review for this project. Because this is on tribal land, it is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, but rather, it is subject to the Tribal Environmental Policy Act. The tribe sent us a notice in July of this year indicating that they were beginning the preparation of a tribal environmental impact statement for the arena facility. We responded to that letter and asked them to analyze a number of different things, including traffic issues, aesthetics, noise issues, et cetera. In terms of their analysis, they've prepared a preliminary environmental analysis, and they have concluded that based on the analysis, no adverse environmental impact will result. So again, I just want to make it clear that it is not subject to CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act, but rather, it is subject to the tribe's Environmental Policy In terms of our recommendations, we have a series In terms of our recommendations, we have a series of recommendations, and you can see that we have suggested conditions of approval attached to our staff report. There are a number of key recommendations which you've heard this evening. Number one, relative to public safety issues, that it will require additional police and fire personnel and equipment and a potential upgrade to fire station number one. In terms of traffic, we suggested a number of requirements to mitigate traffic issues, including the implementation of a transportation management plan, which Mr. Fuller has discussed. We've also recommended as our preferred option to construct all parking spaces onsite. However, if that is not possible, to implement the parking management and mitigation recommendations as an alternative. In terms of event coordination, we would want to have an annual project operation plan to coordinate events with the arena facility to make sure that there isn't an overlap between major city events. Relative to compliance with the Section 14 specific plan, there are some minor revisions that we've suggested in the conditions of approval relative to compliance with the plan. We also note in our suggested conditions of approval that there will be impacts to adjacent residential uses, and we encourage the applicant to work with those residents to address the parking and traffic impacts that will result from the arena project. And then one of the other things that we would suggest is that we continue to work with the tribe and the applicant to coordinate these issues during the permitting and construction process for the arena. As Mr. Fuller has indicated, there's additional study that we need to do in terms of these impacts. And in order to preserve the public safety and the impact that this will result from this arena, we want to make sure that we continue to work with the applicant and the tribe to resolve those issues. So with that, that concludes our recommendations and our report to you. Again, we are happy to respond to any questions you might have about those issues, and we'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And I really just want to thank staff in a very short time, including the Thanksgiving holiday, to put all this together is really impressive. So thank you for all your great work. So any council member questions? Comments, we'll save for later for staff.
Mr. Fag, I didn't see it in this set of recommendations, but in the more in-depth report, there were a number of references to public transportation. Could you comment as to how important you believe enhanced and improved public transportation will play as a role in mitigating transportation and parking issues?
I would suggest that it's absolutely critical. Where we have the ability to get people out of individual cars, single persons in cars, and have them use public transportation, it does a couple of things. Number one, it reduces the demand for parking spaces. Number two, it reduces the traffic impact on the streets and intersections adjacent to the site. And so public transit would be incredibly important as one of the things that we can look at to mitigate the impacts of the arena.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I have one, Director Fag, on parking. And we'll ask this of the developer as well at some point. Some of the ideas that were thrown out, metered parking on downtown streets, if the goal is to keep the parking for merchants primarily, could that also be done just with time-restricted parking? What's the reason it would need to be metered?
Potentially, it could be done with time-restricted parking. However, one of the issues is that whenever you have paid parking, as I'm assuming it would be for the arena, that has been one of our assumptions. People will look for other options rather than paying the price of parking. And so for that reason, I think meters would be important as part of the parking mitigation strategy.
Okay. And would, if we go that route, is the recommendation, I know there's a lot more study that needs to be done, meter during times, you know, evening hours, during times of events, not all the time? Or is that just something that hasn't been looked into yet?
No, that's something that we could investigate as part of our further evaluation of the impacts. So certainly, we could look at that.
Right. And what are the thoughts on how we keep any of the city lots that are primarily for our merchants from being used by people who are going to the arena? If we have four-hour parking downtown, how do we prevent people from parking there?
One of the ways is through controlling the use of those lots through hour limitations. And so, again, thinking that arena events typically, it will be four hours or more that they are there. In the background analysis that the applicant has provided, they basically provided a breakdown of how many people will arrive X number of hours prior to the event and X number of hours after the event. So generally, at the arena, people will be parking for a longer period of time than they would for shopping or restaurants in the downtown area. So I think there's a way to control it through hours, but we might have to look at other options as well.
And one thing that I don't know if we've looked at, and if not, maybe we should, is some kind of program where merchants, you know, could give a validation so people who are going to our existing businesses could stay longer or not have to pay or whatever it might be. But we haven't done that kind of analysis yet.
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
I just have a follow-up question, if I may. Thank you. I know one issue in our downtown is the balance between employees and workers being able to park. And so I'm concerned, and I have questions about if we have metered or if we have time-limited parking, if that's going to further worsen the situation with employees not having long-term parking to work in our downtown. And so especially in considering people who might be employed, or more people employed because of the arena or at the arena, how are we going to balance the needs of workers who need to park as well as merchants and tourists?
What we might look at is some type of a permit parking program for employees of downtown businesses as well. So that way, they have guaranteed parking. Again, we will encourage employees to use transit just as we would for patrons of the arena.
And I would note that the Oakview Group does have a plan that they will sort of, I think, convey with regard to employees of the arena.
And do we have an estimate of the cost of administering these additional programs? So metered parking, employee parking, neighborhood parking programs?
No. In the short period of time that we had to analyze this, we did not have the ability to put those numbers together.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes?
I would assume in a parking plan, a parking management plan, that if what was proposed, or what is negotiated initially, there's a lot of flexibility in that if it does or doesn't work.
I think there would need to be, I think overall, we need to make sure that there will be adequate parking for the arena. But in terms of the locations and things like that, that's something that we could investigate.
Councilmember Middleton?
Follow-up question. Certainly, one of the things that we would hope would happen is individuals who are going to the arena would first visit our stores and shops downtown, have a meal, be so fed that they didn't buy anything when they got to the arena, but then would find that they were really hungry and need a nightcap after celebrating the victory of the local team. So how are we going to manage our parking program so that an individual can in fact visit downtown, walk to the arena, and then walk back to their car?
There might be a couple of different ways to look at that. One of them is relative to the parking fee that's charged for arena patrons, that it would include an extended period so that they could visit downtown restaurants and businesses in addition to events at the arena itself. One of the other things that was brought up is that they will be patronizing other businesses. We hope they're patronizing downtown hotels. And in doing that, that's one of the reasons why we've recommend that the applicant work with hotels to provide shuttles for arena patrons. Again, by having public transit, that reduces the traffic impacts and the parking impacts.
Okay. Thank you. So the developer has asked for about 15 minutes, if counsel's good, with 15 to 20-minute time period to present and respond on these issues. We'd like to invite them up.
Good evening. My name is Tim Lywicky, and I am the president and one of the partners in the Oakview Group. My other partner is Irving Azoff, who is a resident of Coachella Valley and has a home down here. I, for many years, was the president of AEG, so I spent quite a bit of time in Palm Springs and in the valley with Coachella and Stagecoach, and we were very proud and are proud of the relationship that we've had with Palm Springs and the city as well as the surrounding community. So tonight, we are here to first thank you, the mayor, and congratulations and welcome. We look forward to working with you, the council, the city staff, and thank you for your hard efforts over the last 30 days compiling this information. We're grateful and sorry to interrupt your vacation, but most of all, the residents and the citizens of Palm Springs, to talk about an idea to create a world-class venue for Palm Springs and Coachella Valley. We love this valley. We are looking forward to being a part of this valley, in part because we want to bring the first professional sports team back to the valley with the American Hockey League team. As everyone may know, we have submitted and have been rewarded with the 32nd franchise in the American Hockey League and would be the development team for the Seattle NHL team, which we were also awarded as part of our project in Seattle. So in addition to the roughly quarter of a billion dollars that we are spending on privately developing the arena, we are also spending close to $20 million to acquire a franchise, build a training center, and operate that franchise to give Palm Springs a team that they can passionately root, be behind. And yes, to the fire chief, I'll talk to you about season tickets as soon as we're done tonight. So he said he wanted season tickets. I heard him. So we want to talk a little bit about the vision of the arena. Part of what isn't as discussed and hasn't been as highlighted is our vision for being a part of big events, to coordinate with the convention center and coordinate with the retail and the business community to bring big events to Palm Springs above and beyond the events you celebrate today. So whether it's conventions that need an opening and closing keynote address and thus an arena setup, whether it's things like the NCAA Final Four is for hockey, trying to convince them to go to a warm climate instead of a cold climate, whether it's additional cultural events, whether it's adding to the cultural events that are already a part of this community, our ability to work with the retail, our ability to work with the business community, but in particular, our ability to work with the hotel community. So we become a point of destination, and we help them drive the rooms, and we help complete some of the hotels that are either currently under construction or contemplated but yet out of the ground. That is as high a priority as we have for this venue. In addition to that, we are very focused on the music. So we have 31 nights of music that we're projecting for Palm Springs, world-class music and world-class arena artists. And part of what we believe will happen with that is the ability to bring people in from Southern California to, again, frequent the hotels, frequent the retail, frequent the restaurants. That is a high priority for us. And we look forward to working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the convention center, and the hotel community here to use this building and this vision as an economic boom and an economic engine for them to make sure that their business is healthy and relevant. So with us today, we have our team of designers and architects that have designed this building. We are very fortunate that we've been able to put together the best group of architects, project managers, and contractors that we put together in any of our other projects. This is one of six arenas our company is building around the world. And so we were fortunate to get Populous as our architects, Icon as our project manager, and McCarthy as our general contractor to work on this project for us. So we're going to invite them up now, and they're going to take you through a brief review of the design of the building. And then we're going to ask our traffic and our parking outside consultants to come and do a presentation on our plans. So the last thing I'll say before I leave is, this is the beginning of the process, not the end of the process. We look forward to a healthy communication, a healthy dialogue, and a healthy partnership. There are many issues that we will have to address, parking, traffic, in particular, life safety. We will be very aggressive at being a good partner. We pride ourselves, and I built 18 of these venues, stadiums and arenas, in my previous career, and now we have six of them that we're building with OVG. We have always, always forged a great relationship with the community. We have always listened to their issues. We have always done everything we can to provide minimal disruption to their quality of life, and we have been driven at being not just a good neighbor, but a great neighbor. We've given back to every community. We've raised over $100 million for charities in my previous development, and we are committed to using this building as a huge factor in helping with charitable causes and those in need in this community as well. This is the beginning of a great relationship, and we are here to listen, we are here to learn. And on behalf of us in Agua Caliente, our commitment is to make sure that we always lend an ear, we always lend a hand, and we are always aggressive at trying to make Palm Springs an even better place to live and a wonderful place to enjoy great sporting events and great music. So with that, I'll introduce Populous, and he'll take you through the design.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Talk right into the mic.
Yes, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Let me get to the plans here. Here we go. The gentleman from the Department of Planning covered a majority of the issues I would be covering as well, so I'll try to make this brief and highlight any issues that were not discussed. As you can see, this is the site plan that was discussed earlier. 10,000-seat capacity arena hugging the east side of the site with a practice-sized community ice facility to the west that creates a southwestern plaza with access to downtown and views back to the mountains. We have a loading dock to the north that is below grade, 25 feet. We also feature an exterior concourse to the south that will include concessions and pop-up concessions and canopy shading. To the north, we have parking, as was described earlier. An item that wasn't discussed earlier is that truck access to the loading dock will be from Encelia, trying to stay away from the residential side of the arena, to access to a recessed loading dock 25 feet below grade to limit views and noise to the community. This is a transverse building section, shows how we're sinking the building into grade, trying to keep the overall height of the building down. As we said earlier, the tallest part of the building is 61 feet. However, at the streetscape, we range between 25 and 35 feet at the street, at the sidewalk, and 45 feet on the southern facade. For reference of scale, the parking garage to the south is 55 feet, I believe, so we're within range of kind of that scale, to give everyone kind of an idea of that. This is a longitudinal section, kind of showing the main arena bowl. We have 8,700 lower bowl seats with 1,300 premium bowl seats with a capacity of 10,000 seats with additional floor seating for concerts. We're using, utilizing, sorry, utilizing maximum rigging capacity so you can host any event that is required for the venue. The arena will have, feature five clubs, four public bars, four premium bars, and 20 luxury suites. And my colleague, Scott McCrack, and our project designer will walk us through the exterior design. Thank you.
Thank you. We've already previously seen these two images, but I want to go into an in-depth look at some of the programmatic pieces. And as one of the designers on this project, I'm proud to say that I've worked on it, and I think it'll be a great asset to the community. So standing here at the southwest plaza, we've envisioned this southwest plaza as a programmable space for the community, so farmers' markets and events can happen on this roughly 15,000-square-foot plaza. Standing here, you can see the main entry to the arena, so those double doors under the canopy, the shading canopy, that's your southwest main entrance. It's nearest downtown strategically located with the building mass on Amada. We envision this as an asset to the community, as the community ice. The entrance is right off of the programmable plaza. You have five ticketing windows, your community ice lobby, and then your, what we really think is exciting about this is the pop-up concessions is a unique feature to this arena, and it's great for this environment in Palm Springs as an indoor-outdoor facility. So looking at the southeast corner of the arena, you can see the mountains in the background to place it. Very excited about how this is a link to the existing buildings as a civic building, the arena in proximity to the cultural center and the... As a civic building, the arena in proximity to the cultural center and the convention center is a huge asset. Having civic buildings like this is important, and having their proximity close to downtown as an urban planner is, I think, a very important asset. The architectural language of the building, we've drawn a lot of similarities from existing buildings, so adobe stucco, and then just thinking of this building as an earth-sheltered building, so part of the desert environment. With that, I will introduce Mike Bates with Mobility. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. My name's Mike Bates, I'm with the Mobility Group, and we prepared the parking and transportation studies that you have seen. I do have a presentation. Some of it has already been covered, so I'm going to skip over certain slides. Don't worry that you're missing anything, I just, I want to keep this brief and to the point for you and get towards some of the key conclusions and some of the proposals. So if I can work out, this is always a challenge for me, let's try this. No? Is it the top button, the green one? Yeah, there we go. Okay. Okay, so we've already talked about, I think, the event summary, we're familiar with that. The city staff did a good job describing the summary of events, and about thirty percent would be sellout events, and the rest would be less. So arena traffic does not occur every day of the year, it only occurs obviously during events, and it typically occurs primarily in the hour before an event and the hour after an event, although there are other hours on those shoulders that occurs. And the best way to address any traffic and parking issues is, as you've heard, through management programs rather than infrastructure necessarily, and that's how most arenas and entertainment facilities address those issues. Just to touch on, we did do a comprehensive analysis of both traffic and parking. We feel it was conservative in terms of the assumptions we made, so that we're looking at the upper case of what potential effects there would be. We did address sellout events in that respect. We coordinated the methodology with the tribe and with the city of Palm Springs, and we looked at a total of seventy-seven intersections across the city and forty-eight roadway segments. And we have accounted for future development projects that would occur in the city prior to the arena being completed, as well as changes to the transportation network, and we have done a comprehensive review of parking within a half-mile of the arena, which we felt was about the maximum people would be prepared to walk. I think we've covered some of these assumptions on how people would get there. Clearly, a lot of people would be in the valley, they may even be staying in downtown hotels, so a proportion would walk. We've been very conservative in some of these assumptions. Only five percent, we assumed, would use Uber, that could go higher. Only two and a half people per car, that could go higher. So we do think we're at the upper end of trip forecasts, and not all the trips to the arena occur in a single hour. Based on a lot of empirical data from other facilities, we're projecting about two-thirds of the total trips arrive in the pre-event hour. Some arrive a little before that, if they want to visit other commercial activities. Some, believe it or not, actually arrive after the start of the event, and that's kind of documented in a number of places. And typically, about a little more than two-thirds would leave in the hour after the event. Some people like to stay behind and just take their time to leave. There is a casino opposite the site, so people may like to walk across the street and go to the casino before they leave. And as we've talked, not all patrons would park at the arena, I'll get into that in a second. I think the city staff have done a good job of addressing where we calculated there would be traffic effects. There are tables and maps in the report. Again, these will be addressed through the transportation management plan, primarily with traffic control officers and potentially traffic signal timing changes. You've heard about the parking provision, between the onsite parking and parking on tribal land that would be available. This excludes spaces that would be used in the casino garage by existing users. There's approximately thirteen hundred and twenty-five spaces available that would be provided by the arena and the tribe. That's about over fifty percent of the typical parking need of the arena, going down to a little less than forty percent of the concert sellout need. The strategy does not provide all the parking onsite. It's quite common in downtown locations for arenas to use existing parking in the area, which allows for an efficient shared parking of existing parking resources. We have found in our business increasingly in recent years that the focus on parking is in effectively managing a supply of parking, whether it's employee or visitor or short-term or long-term. So management of the actual parking supply is very critical. With a dispersed parking strategy, we avoid focusing all the traffic into one location and having to deal with it on fewer streets, and by dispersing it to different locations, obviously, we disperse the traffic and we're hoping to make more efficient use of available parking resources. As I said, we studied all the parking within a half-mile of the arena. We did a comprehensive inventory of the spaces. We did what we call a utilization survey, which is a survey of the actual occupancy of those spaces, and we then eliminated occupied spaces from the analysis. So we're not suggesting that existing parkers would be replaced. We're only focusing our analysis on what we measured as the unoccupied spaces in the times that we were looking at. We excluded private lots, we only included publicly available lots, and we identified the total number of spaces, number of spaces that would be available, and then the number of spaces that totally, including the arena and the tribe. So there is a lot of parking available from the surveys and analysis that we did. Total of about almost thirty-nine hundred spaces when you get to the end of this analysis. Again, no use of private lots and no use of spaces that are currently occupied. Again, we do think, because we have conservatively high traffic estimates, we have conservatively high parking estimates, we do have strategies to reduce trip and parking demand. Our initial estimate is that we could reduce parking demand by almost a thousand spaces with things like increasing auto occupancy, encouraging rideshare, higher Uber, more use of transit. So there is that possibility. So our findings were that, putting all this together, there's a sufficient supply of parking without displacing existing parkers. To give you some sense, for a typical attendance, and it's very hard to predict exactly where people are going to park, so this is a bit of a numbers game to try and give people a sense, but obviously, there's some flexibility. More people may decide to park off-street than on-street or vice versa. But for a typical attendance event on average, and it does vary little between day of the week, over half would park in arena and tribal lots. Maybe thirty percent would park on-street and fifteen percent would park off-street. Those percentages may change again because there is a lot of flexibility for a typical event. So this suggests that arena parkers would only be using twenty percent of the total parking supply within a half-mile. Just to give you an indication that they would not be displacing parkers. They'd be using a little under half of the available parking supply. Those numbers go a little higher, obviously, for sellout events. Forty percent would be in arena and tribal lots, twenty-five and thirty-five percent on-street and off-street respectively, but still only using forty percent of the total parking supply in the area. We identified, as the map showed, the possibility of using the prairie schoon a lot, convention stand a lot, and the courtyard upper deck. These obviously would need agreements as part of the parking management plan, and that's clearly laid out. I did want to touch on downtown. Our analysis assumed very, very, very little use of downtown parking, less than, way less than fifteen percent of the on-street parking. We did not assume any use of the downtown private, uh, public lots, any use of the downtown parking garage and/or the downtown project parking garage. I tried to keep those two separate, with a possible exception on a Friday sellout event of maybe a hundred spaces in that garage. But we haven't included the employee spaces in the supply. So, very important to understand that as we put these numbers in the report, we basically assumed there would be very little use of downtown parking because it's already being used by existing users. So the key things, as I come to a conclusion here, and these are in the transportation and parking study that we submitted, and city staff have talked, have touched on these, there would be a parking management plan and there would be a transportation management plan. We've put an outline in the report of the kind of things that would be included in those plans. Obviously, this is preliminary. The plans need to be worked out with the city, with the tribe, and stakeholders. They're done over the next few months. We weren't presumptuous enough to put details without consulting with everybody, and yes, in my experience, they are flexible because as things move forward, they need to be able to respond to potential changes. So they're not cast in stone, they're a dynamic thing. And my experience on arenas like Staples Center is you tweak it and you work out what's working and what's not working, and you continually update it. But to just give you a sense, these are the suggestions in the report for the parking management plan. The basic category is the website, which would have very comprehensive information on all transportation modes, how you get there, and all your alternatives. Neighborhood parking protection plans, which need to be worked out with the city and with the neighborhoods, with their full participation, to protect the neighborhoods from traffic and parking intrusion, and these have worked very well at other locations. A parking reduction program to continue to try and increase rideshare. Someone mentioned the hotel, the idea of hotel shuttles, possibility of extending the bus trolley service to the arena and longer operating hours. Temporary message signs to help people find the parking areas, and very importantly, event scheduling, and this is a very important part of any arena, is particularly in this kind of environment, is to coordinate with the city and other jurisdictions on events to make sure there's no conflicts and you have plans to address issues. I know when we work on Staples Center now for almost twenty years, they meet regularly looking ahead, one month, three months, six months, what's happening at Staples, what's happening at the convention center, what's happening at LA Live and the Microsoft Theater, I think that's the latest name, and they're always coordinating how they're sharing parking and what traffic and parking effects they expect to have. And finally, the transportation management plan would have, again, the website with very comprehensive information. Traffic management and control. Traffic control officers are a major feature of dealing with arena traffic very, very effectively in real time. It's a proven technique, and we would expect to utilize traffic control officers, as Mr. Fuller said, of the number of the key intersections. Pedestrian management and control, a similar thing, to make sure pedestrians can safely cross streets. And you can see all the individual pieces within each of these, but I won't go into detail in all of them. Neighborhood protection for traffic, not just parking. Signage and wayfinding, there may be some permanent signage, there may be some temporary signage, like message boards, and there will be clear information in the website also, and again, event coordination. So these are very critical pieces, they are in the report that we submitted, and we do anticipate that they would be worked out in more detail as time goes on prior to opening the facility with the city, basically working with the city and the community. With that, I think, are you going to just do a quick, we're good? Apparently, we're good.
Great.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And please stay up, in case, I'm sure there are some questions on parking and traffic.
Maybe some questions on traffic and parking, you think?
Would my guess, and I just have two quick ones. What was the date range when you did the parking study?
Excuse me, sir?
The date range when the parking study was done?
We did all the traffic and parking studies in the middle of May.
May, okay.
We then, we then, we then went to the data and the research from CVAG, from Section Fourteen Plan, and from previous city studies, and we adjusted based on adjustment factors in those studies to represent the winter season for both traffic and parking.
Okay. And in the study we were doing before we knew about the arena, that Laz Parking was doing, they found we were pretty much at capacity in the six-to-nine hour. Does your analysis confirm that?
We took a look at their study, and we found broadly we were consistent. I mean, obviously, there were a few little differences, street by street, but by and large, they were pretty consistent.
Okay. And my one other question.
And I mean, we did find that a lot of the downtown parking is fully utilized, yes. That's why we did not assume it would be used by arena patrons in our analysis.
And do you have any thoughts on how the city, working with OFEU together, would keep people coming to the arena from parking in the downtown parking lot or parking on city streets, since you're assuming they won't? But obviously, those are even closer to the restaurants people might go to first and walk to the arena, so do you have a suggestion on how that would be prevented and people instead would go to this paid parking?
I think that's for us to work out collectively. I know there's a commitment from the ownership group to address that, and Tim can speak more directly if he'd like to, but I think that is part of the conversation as to how the arena parking plan interfaces with the plans you want to do in the downtown, moving on from the initial Laz Parking study.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I know the arena, I'm pretty certain the arena wants to direct parking away from the downtown and into the other facilities.
Oh, sorry, I'll add one last thing. So, we actually would prefer people park in our parking lots because that's part of our economic model. I want to reemphasize, we're spending two-hundred-and-fifty million privately, so we're not asking the city for any subsidies, we're not asking for any handouts from anybody. Between us and Agua Caliente, we're building this privately. So clearly, parking is a high priority for us. One, we would prefer people go have dinner and hang out downtown, come to the game or the concert, and then go back and have a drink. I think Lisa was right, that is a high priority for us to work with the downtown business community to encourage that and find ways in which we can make sure that we're protecting the parking for that usage. We plan on selling parking when we sell tickets, and so whether it be season ticket holders, and they will buy season parking so we can dictate their spaces, or people buying tickets to a concert where we pre-sell the parking and then can direct them directly to that parking spot as we get closer on the night of the event, that is a new technology that, based on mobile apps, allows us to absolutely pre-sell parking, control parking, and make sure they're parking in areas that are away from those parking spaces that are being utilized by the downtown business district.
Great. Thank you. Other, Councilman Middleton?
Okay. I want to follow up on a question with regard to parking, and one of the thoughts that I've heard expressed is that Uber and Lyft rideshare programs will pay, play an enhanced part of this. That sounds very good, but part of the impact of that potentially is that individuals driving into the Palm Springs area will park on residential streets in a mile, a mile and a half from the arena, distributing the impact of that parking much more broadly, and then take the Uber and Lyft into the arena for the very short drive. How are we going to control for maintaining the residential neighborhoods that we have?
I understand the concern. I'm not sure I would see it quite the same way, but I will say that, in my experience, Uber and Lyft can have a very high degree of control over how their people operate. So for example, they can geofence areas, okay? They can literally geofence areas where their drivers cannot accept calls to pick up. That is one, I'm just suggesting, that is one way. We've done that, we did that in Coachella at the festivals. They literally reduced the radius from infinity to five hundred feet through their geofencing. So I think, you know, I'm not going to prejudge and say that's the solution, but I think there are ways to address that as an integrated part. are ways to address that as an integrated part of the parking and traffic management plan. But I understand the concern.
All right. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Woods.
Hi, Mike. You've been in this a long time.
Mr. Woods.
How are you? Very good. Thank you.
It's a small world.
It's a small world it is. You know, ownership had stated earlier when you were talking that part of the economic model is the selling of parking spaces. And we know that pricing of parking spaces is one way to get people out of their cars and to use other forms of transportation. The unfortunate part here is we don't have that other forms of transportation infrastructure so well in place like a city of Los Angeles has. So, it puts the whole kind of concept of pricing at a whole different level. Pricing, if it's, pricing can also cause people to not want to use the expensive lots and drive around and put more, more trips onto the city streets, and thus, and also go into areas where we not, don't necessarily want them to park. So, I'd like your thoughts on some of this.
Good question. I think part of, I mean, a key part of these two plans that we're suggesting are neighborhood protection plans. And there are a variety of ways of doing that. Permit parking is a very successful form that's been used elsewhere. That prevents people parking in neighborhoods, and therefore, driving into neighborhoods. So, that is certainly, certainly one area. I think the whole parking pricing thing is really a conversation between what the owners want to do with pricing and what the city wants to do with pricing. Right now, you have virtually nowhere in the city that charges for parking. So, it's almost a unique environment. And, you know, these are just things that, this is a typical example of where the conversation will need to go in working cooperatively on these plans. If Tim has anything else, I mean, I think he's mentioned the kind of things they want to do with parking.
So, two things. One, keep in mind that the majority of the people that are coming to the 38 hockey games are going to be season ticket holders or people that are using season ticket holder seats. Our ability to pre-sell parking in specific lots is a huge opportunity to take the majority of the parking for the hockey games and be able to control it on a seasonal basis. Secondly, as I said, this is the beginning of the process, and it's a process that will last for the next 35 years between ourselves, Agua Caliente, the city, and the neighborhoods. So, our goal is to build a parking plan that ultimately works well for the neighborhood. We agree with you, if you price our lots too high, we are going to drive people away from our lots, and they will be circling the neighborhood trying to find free parking. We completely understand and get that. At the same time, part of what we're hoping to do is work with the city. I would tell you that when we first opened Staples Center, I'm not sure we had a public transportation plan either. But we do understand that the trolley, for example, can be something that can be an ingenious way of getting people to visit the restaurants and the bars downtown, to be at the hotels downtown, and then come to the arena. We have to sit down with the city and figure out how we ultimately extend the route of the trolley to include the arena on the nights of those 31 concerts. Those are really the nights that we had to focus in on, because the majority of parking for the 38 nights of hockey will be season, season ticket holders buying permanent parking spaces.
Thank you.
I would just add that I think, you know, for concerts even, if a parking pass is included with the ticket, that parking pass can be directed to a specific lot with specific directions. So, it's, it's quite controllable in that sense with the, with the apps and the technology we have.
And just one, one other question. There's many people in the audience who may not understand the statistics that are in your report. So, I'm wondering if you can explain qualitatively, kind of the implications of this arena an hour before, an hour after a concert or a venue event. And I say that because I think the citizens of our cities are used and accustomed to very free-flow traffic in the city and an ability to get around in a very easy manner. And I'm just quantitative, qualitatively, if you can explain what might happen an hour before and an hour after.
Sure. Part of what will happen is, because the parking is dispersed, the traffic will not be focused all in one place, so it will be distributed across numerous streets. Secondly, we use the city's standards for what we call level of service. And I, trying to stay qualitative, but for the members of the public, level of service is describing traffic conditions at intersections, a little like school. It goes from A to F. A is good. F, you're failing, and there's congestion. The city standard is D. So, when we did our traffic analysis, we used, for the hour before and after the event, we used the city standard, even though it's the standard for, as the city, as Marcus Fuller said, for regular developments, we use the level of service D. So, for the intersections that we identified, it would be worse than D, and there would be more delays at those intersections than the city standard. And that is how we apply traffic control officers to ameliorate that and get the traffic flowing more effectively. I hope that's a qualitative explanation, but tell me if it's not. I mean, in, in short, there will be more delays at certain intersections, and the intent of the traffic control officers is to minimize those delays.
I have a question. In your report, in the presentation, you wrote, or it stated, arenas typically do not provide all parking on site. And I was wondering if you could just elaborate on that. Obviously, this is the first arena in Palm Springs and the Agua Caliente reservation. So, you, it sounds like, have developed, I heard you say, over a dozen or so arenas of this magnitude and much, much larger. So, could you, from your, and I think that would be helpful in your expertise in developing arenas like this in cities and places like this, you know, what is typical for our public, for our staff, for our council, to kind of understand from your expertise in developing parking management plans for arenas, what that typically looks like?
Yeah. I can start, and maybe Tim can add his experience.
Especially if there are comparable sites that are like this.
As much as we try and find a comparable, every arena almost literally is different and has different circumstances. Some are in the suburbs, and as the gentleman said, they're surrounded by a sea of suburban parking and no transit, and that's one type of arena. Other arenas are downtown, where, or in downtown locations, where they decide it makes a lot of sense to share parking, rather than put city lots, or, you know, use city blocks for surface parking that is not used very often, only occasionally for events, and then maybe it's empty, but to, but to use existing parking resources in the area. And some have a lot of transit, like Chase Arena, the new Chase Arena in San Francisco has a tremendous amount of transit. I mean, tons of transit. So, they're fortunate in that they encourage people to use all those transit modes. They don't provide very much parking, but there are other parking facilities in the area that can be used. Stadia that are next to, say, office buildings. The office building empties out at 5:00, the, or is empty at the weekend. The stadium needs parking in the evening or at weekends, so there's a very good sharing that can occur of those. Rather than have two separate parking sources, one used at one time, one used at the other, they're both empty at different times, you can actually effectively share parking together. So, but every arena is different in terms of geographic location, amount of transit, the whole thing.
So, two examples. One, Staples Center. When we started with Staples Center, we had 16 different parking lots, mostly surface parking. Today, the surface parking is all gone, and there are less than a half dozen parking garages that are handling Staples Center. What happened is people began to figure out how to park elsewhere. Some did take light rail. But for the most part, the existing parking that existed in downtown Los Angeles became the outlet that was utilized, and the majority of the parking that was controlled by Staples Center is now gone. And we've lost about two-thirds of the parking spaces that we controlled, and people have figured out how to park elsewhere. In Seattle, we're building a grand total of 465 new parking spaces, because they don't, they, they don't want anyone to ultimately park and do a, a traffic and auto. So, here, what we had to do is sit down with the city, with the business community, and with the, the neighborhood, and identify what it is that are the high priorities. So, we understand that the free parking for the merchants in downtown Palm Springs is critical. We have to protect that. We know that on a given night, on an average attendance, we control between our parking lots and the convention parking lots, 2,200 spaces. We know when the convention center is booked, because they're usually booked for big events more than a year in advance. And we know when our building is being booked, and we could coordinate by monthly meetings with the convention center, how to coordinate maximum usage of their parking for our events. And when there is a major conflict or a major celebration in the city, then we have to stay away from booking an event in the concert on those nights so we could utilize the 2,200 spaces.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay. No outbursts, please. The next thing is public comment. So, we will do that. Okay. Oh, do you have, are there more council member questions? Okay. Go ahead then. We'll have public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leywicky? These are more broad questions than, than some of the specifics that we've been dealing with. And I will make a full disclosure that I attended my first hockey game in 1967, when the L.A. Kings opened. So, I'm actually someone who will buy a ticket and come to, to the games, but.
Thank you.
I've done, I've been a sports fan for about 50 years, and during the course of that, I've read an awful lot of stories, and even a number of academic literature, dealing with the question of whether or not arenas and stadiums are actually a boon to local economies. And depending on which one you read and when, you can get quite a bit of variation, but most of them have certainly debunked the idea that public entities should subsidize stadiums and arenas, because they rarely provide the economic benefit back to the local economy that, that was originally promised. Now, I will note, very importantly, you're not asking us to subsidize the construction of the arena. In fact, you're bringing $250 million to our town. And that's, that's something that's quite laudable. But to get to the specific question, one of the things that I have taken away from all of the literature is where there is perhaps some evidence of economic benefit, it is most particularly where the attendees at these events are significantly and disproportionately individuals who travel to the area. They're coming from somewhere else. So, can you talk about your economic studies that I am sure you have done, as to where individuals are going to be coming from who are going to be attending these events? Are we going to be seeing people leave Edmonton because it's warmer down here and they'd rather watch a hockey game here? Even though, I will note, Edmonton's in first place right now.
So, thank you, Lisa. So, let me divide it into two. First of all, please duly note, our four arenas that we currently as a company are developing, I haven't asked for a penny from any city in any of those four markets. I personally believe that it is the job of the city to ultimately deal with transportation, life safety, health, and education. I think the private sector should go pay for these arenas and stadiums, and that's exactly what we've done in all four of our developments, and exactly what we're going to do in Palm Springs. We're proud of the fact, we're going to spend $250 million privately here, and we're not asking the taxpayers to pay a penny. That said, let me divide this into two. Economic impact. So, on the American Hockey League team, and the average will be roughly 7,500 people per night. The majority of those 7,500 people will be from this community. And so, working with season ticket holders, and we expect the majority of those 7,500 people will be season ticket holders. That's more of a return visit. It's more about the local community. There is an economic impact, because we do create roughly 60 to 70 brand-new jobs for the community here. But at the end of the day, that doesn't have the pull of outside the region. The concerts, on the other hand, will. So, what we're expecting to happen with the 31 concerts we're projecting to host each and every year, is that many of those people will come from Southern California. If we have an opportunity to convince someone to go to the Eagles in Palm Springs on a Friday night, instead of the Eagles in Las Vegas, our bet is many people from Los Angeles will come down and make a weekend of it. So, part of what we have to do with those 31 nights of music, because we do believe that is where there will be a huge amount of tourism created for the hotel community, is figure out a way to build out weekend packages, to figure out a way to get people to walk to the building from the hotels, take the trolley from the hotels, and drive the retail community so that we use the building as an economic engine. In addition, we've already had two meetings with the folks, the new management team, my ex-company, at the convention center, and we're very driven, and in fact, as part of the proposal we have made to them, we've created a fund that can be used on an annual basis that we will pay for, to go out and search for big events, athletic events, cultural events, that we as a community can bid on and host here, that could drive the room nights and drive the hotel. So, that's where we see the economic benefit. I would say that we had a professor come from Chicago when we were debating whether or not to build Staples Center. He ultimately said that arenas don't have an economic impact. He should go down to Los Angeles and see that arena. It saved downtown Los Angeles, and we're proud of that. But we did privatize it, and we paid for it ourselves. And this building, I think one of the great parts that Agua Caliente and us are proud of, we are privatizing the building, we will pay for it ourselves, and we will operate it at our risk.
All right. I appreciate that, and thank you. We still have to pay for the public safety. We have to pay for the parking management. And what we will need to be working in partnership with you is to ensure that as we move forward, that we do in fact cover the cost that the city is incurring.
Yeah. I don't want to get too much into comments and try and focus on questions.
So, last point, as I said, the beginning of a process, it's a partnership. So, we're here to try to figure out a way to make sure that as we go forward here, everyone in this community is proud of the arena, and it turned out to be one of the best deals the city's ever made. We have work to do, and we understand that. We look forward to sitting down with you and working through this with you, Agua Caliente, and us, to try to figure out how we resolve these issues.
Any other questions? Okay. So, with that, we're going to open it up for public comment. If you want to speak and you haven't, submit a yellow card. There are yellow cards by the city clerk right over here. Please do so, because we don't have our normal equipment up here. City clerk will be calling out names and setting the timer. People have two minutes to speak. And why don't we start public comment?
And currently, just so the council knows, we have 27 cards. And the first speaker is Jorge Gutierrez. And the next speaker after that will be Dan Turzain, or Turzain, followed by Darrell Terrell.
Yeah. So, if you're one of the next two, if you could get up to the front, we can move this a little quicker for everyone else.
Distinguished council, ladies and gentlemen, I've heard with interest the presentations, and one thing that it calls to my attention is that this project had flaws from the beginning. I tried to calculate that for a city of 44,000, you have a stadium of 11,000. Now, that's like trying to build a 250,000-seat stadium for a city of 1 million. They said such disproportionality that we should anticipate that we're going to see problems. Now, we have discussed the economic reasons, which should be proud to have a team, and you should be doing that to a hockey team of Palm Springs. But there are more important things in life. One of them is our health. Now, we don't talk much about it. The emission of green gases will go up 1.8% according to this paper today. That is quite significant. That is quite significant for people that have COPD, asthma, heart disease. And now, next problem, the big traffic, not solved yet. They call 911, sorry, we're in a gridlock. That's not the kind of answer you want to have when you are in that kind of situation. None of this has been addressed. And the other issue, because it's not my time to minutes, is I hear a lot, we're dealing with a sovereign nation, and therefore, they can do anything they want. Now, my question to you is, aren't we a sovereign people, sovereign nation, the USA?
Your time's up. We can't respond to comments, we can only talk after...
No, no, that's rhetorical.
I assumed as much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
The next speaker is Dan T., followed by Daryl Terrell, followed by David Bronat.
Yeah, my name is Dan Turzain. My wife and I live at 450 Hermosa, just a few blocks over there, so we're kind of sensitive to this issue. And when we look at situations like McCormick's having a car show and cars parked hither and yon all over around our house, we are very sensitive to traffic and parking issues. I heard someone mention that we're going to work on this for 35 years, and as I look at the city council, the staff, and most of the people in this room, I haven't got 35 years to wait to get the parking stations squared away. I had a whole host of comments that I wanted to make, most of which have already been addressed. I heard about all the good intentions, and then I heard that someone is going to widen Alejo, so there goes my front yard. So I guess I should be happy about that. So, having said all of that, I don't have much more to say. I certainly hope that the people who are going to be impacted in this and are wishing for the success of this venture, I hope that they consider that the parking and traffic are just as important to them as they are to us. If the parking and traffic isn't resolved, if it isn't favorable, the project really won't be as successful as it should be. And perhaps there are other locations that it might be more successful. Thank you much.
Daryl Terrell, followed by David Bronat, and then J.R. Roberts.
Hi, my name is Daryl Terrell. From my observation, our city should not be burdened with the public safety costs. I believe, like Councilmember Middleton, I think that the company should pay for the cost for the extra for public safety. The residents should not be burdened with the traffic. The city, the citizens should also have a fair chance at local hire on this project. They should be able to come from the community to work on it. But however listened to this information, we are in a pickle. My late mom used to say, if life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. We are faced with a challenge, but it's not impossible. The city was built on the impossible. And just look at the downtown area. There are some people that were saying that the downtown would never be built, but they were wrong, because this city is a can-do city. They could turn the impossible into make it possible. And so there's a lot of brain power in this room, and to make this project possible, with a less impact on residents, the city, and the small business community. That's why I still believe that this can be successful if we work together. It's not going to be easy. This is a very complex issue, but if I, if I, the past shows anything, it is possible. So we just need to work out the issues with it, and I think it will be possible. And also, again, I'd like to emphasize that local people from the community should be able to work in this facility, build the facility. Thank you.
David Bronat, followed by J.R. Roberts, and then Andy Warren.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am a full-time resident of Palm Springs. I have been to plenty of hockey games and different types of arena. And this is, back to the discourse that Oakview has presented, this isn't L.A., this isn't Seattle, it's not San Francisco. This is Palm Springs. I think basically what I'm getting is that you're really clueless to how this city operates, the infrastructure, and everything else. I feel like it's, instead of a field of dreams, it's a field of schemes. There wasn't any dialogue with the city and between your group and the tribe and the city. All along, you have agreements already with Live Nation and with the American Hockey League, and now you want to talk to us about how we're going to handle it? You've known about this. Those contracts didn't happen back in, what was it, July, when it leaked, as opposed to waiting till you had your ceremony here in September, October. Those agreements were a long time in the planning, and now we're going to be stuck with the infrastructure costs. That's just unacceptable. As a global company, you were pretty well aware of what this is going to do to a city, and with all the costs, the burden that was going to place on a city. I don't think you're that clueless to that. You're a global company, and you know how the world operates. And you think you can come into a small town and use big-city comparable things here. It's not going to work, and it's going to leave a bad taste with the citizens and the tribe. We are just, at this point, I'm very disappointed in the tribe. This was so underhanded, and they know, they're well aware that they're not really obligated to any of these infrastructure costs. I'm just, I think this is definitely a scheme, field of schemes. And what a disappointment for this city, if we allow this to go on.
The next speaker is J.R. Roberts, followed by Andy Warren, followed by David Austin.
You'd think I'd have better things to do tonight, wouldn't you? Two minutes? What were we thinking? I come to you tonight because I have great concerns about this project, and I have since I first heard about it, and I agree with the last speaker, way too late. And I very much look forward to the entertainment possibilities that this can bring. I think in many respects, this will be great for Palm Springs, and it can be woven into our identity. Their report estimated, if I read it correctly, about 144 events per year. That's easily two events per weekend in a city that is already packed with events every weekend. Their parking study suggesting that they are going to use parking that is already used by the city and by the tribe and their casinos is preposterous. It's like trying to solve air pollution with a hair dryer. When someone stands up here and says that they're willing to work together with the city to solve this problem, but comes up with a joke of a suggestion at the beginning, that's a non-starter to me. Nothing about this feels right to me. There's also something else that we haven't really talked about yet. We will continue, I'm sure, to have the conversations about the impacts on our community and on our residents, but there's another issue. It's perceptions. So some cities, and particularly Palm Springs, are considered or perceived to be user-friendly. Somebody in Cat City or someplace else wouldn't think twice about hopping in their car to come down, spend an evening at Lulu's, and get home at a reasonable hour, because they know it'll be relatively easy to park, it'll be easy to come into the city, they can get in and they can get out. Laguna is a city that is not perceived as user-friendly. I very much worry about us losing that perception, and I think it will have a very negative impact on us and on the tribe. We're shooting ourselves in the foot.
The next speaker is Andy Warren, followed by David Austin, followed by Jeffrey Bernstein.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm generally a pro-development person, but cannot fathom the feasibility of a 10,000-plus-seat arena in this neighborhood. Being concerned, I reached out to Palm Springs city officials and neighbors. I understand the city has little or no control over tribal matters, but I feel the city does owe its residents a plan to address issues that are caused by tribal development. So far, I have not seen a satisfactory or workable plan presented. In speaking with my neighbors at Soul Palm Springs and in the neighborhood, I discovered that many of us feel the same way. I conducted an informal poll of residents in my community. Although I cannot claim to represent other residents, I'm sharing the results of that poll with you. Of the replies I received, only 8% are in favor of the arena as proposed. 20% are completely opposed to the arena, and 72% have concerns similar to mine. We cannot be ignored. Another thing I've not heard much about tonight is pedestrian safety. In walking across the street to the convention center tonight, I was nearly hit by a car, as were two other people walking with me. In the next corner down, I saw another woman walking to the convention center who was also almost hit by a car. That's just with a small crowd here tonight. Can you imagine with all the cars we're talking about and pedestrian safety? Also, what happens to emergency vehicles trying to get to Desert Regional Hospital just up the street from the arena? Are they going to be impacted by all the traffic? Since I began my research, I've now discovered the additional police and fire department concerns and costs. It's completely unfair to negatively impact our peaceful and existing way of life and be expected to absorb substantial increased costs for protection. At the very least, the tribe should be responsible for these increased costs and to submit adequate and unbiased traffic and parking mitigation plans. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Austin, followed by Jeffrey Bernstein, followed by Sue Logan.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I first want to thank the city staff, I think for almost everybody in the room, for the great work they did in a very short period of time on the city's staff report on this project. I really want to thank them in particular for highlighting the parking and traffic issues, which is, I think, the biggest concern of your audience. We live just up the street, off of Caballeros. We were attracted to this area because it was obvious the Section 14 specific plan was working to make this a great neighborhood to live in. We have wide sidewalks, we have great landscaping, we have bike paths, all the things a good place to live needs. But instructive, I think, is our experience up until this very last year with our friend Robolites. In the previous years, lots of the movie colony was restricted in terms of parking, so they all came down here to Caballeros and Alejo and Amado. And we ended up with people crossing the street in the dark, often with little children in tow, to get where they were going, rather than walking down to the controlled intersection. We had, at the end of the day, piles of trash along our neighborhood streets. So here's what we imagine, all of us standing here in front of you, is at 10:30 at night, there are 10,000 people coming out of the arena, trying to remember where they parked their car, trampling across our lovely landscaping that the city says we're supposed to maintain, leaving their trash behind, and running over people as they're trying to get the heck out of Dodge, charging down Alejo towards sunrise, or charging down Amado towards sunrise. That's why we're concerned. This is a human problem. We hope you will stand your ground, pay attention to the city report, and stand up for your citizens. Thank you.
Jeffrey Bernstein, followed by Sue Logan, followed by David Friedman.
Mayor Coors, Mayor Portem Holsteg, Councilmembers Middleton, Woods, Garner, Dr. Reddy and staff, thank you for holding this meeting, for all the work you did, and for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeffrey Bernstein. I'm the owner of Destination PSP, a locally-owned business in the center of downtown. I'm also on the board of Main Street, the Downtown and Uptown Business Association, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, the Palm Springs Hospitality Association, as well as a major J. Commissioner and a full-time resident. In all of these capacities, I'm extremely excited about the potential benefits of the new arena. Expanded tourism, more people attending our city events, restaurants and stores will not only help our businesses, but will also add to our tax revenue, which will help the city. As a resident, I'm looking forward to more entertainment, sporting, and other leisure options. History has shown the work done by the Agua Caliente tribe in our valley has benefited our community greatly, and Oakview certainly has a reputation of excellence in its field. That said, the benefits of this arena need to be additive and not take away from our livelihood as it stands. As a resident, I'm concerned that if our police, fire, and other public safety services are stretched too thin, the community will suffer. If there are additional funds needed to pay for services, I would hope and expect the arena owners would fund that. As a business owner, I'm especially concerned about the parking issue. We're an extremely seasonal business, and if all the majority or even part of our spaces are filled by arena attendees, then our downtown businesses will suffer. Insufficient parking will undoubtedly deter our current tenants. I would ask that we simultaneously work with Oakview and the Agua Caliente tribe to come up with or build additional parking options, whether it's new structures, shuttles to more remote lots, and if we use the shuttles, it should be done in a way to still encourage downtown walking before and after events. If there's no additional parking structures or lots planned, then I would ask the city to look into ways to restrict our downtown parking so that it's only for downtown business use. Thank you very much for your time.
Sue Logan, followed by David Friedman, followed by Chaz McGlorry.
Thank you very much. Before I start, could you put that first slide up of the site plan that you had at the very beginning? Would you be able to put that slide up? Oh, poo. Okay, well, thank you so much for letting us come. I'm Sue Logan. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Palm Springs Homeowners Association for the Deauville condominiums that's right across the street here. We will share the east border of the planned Palm Springs Arena project on North Caye El Segundo, which is, by the way, a two-lane road, and I could point to my condo on that site map. That's why I'm like a half an inch from that arena. As with all great projects that will affect generations to come, there are advantages and disadvantages. Mitigating the disadvantages is key to the success that can only be known in the future. And thank you, Chief Rez, you spoke to my heart about our sleepy little neighborhood without the proper protection will be sadly, sadly destroyed. Today, I want to bring to light some of the concerns of the neighborhood. We have been in this neighborhood. There are approximately 300 people in our development. They have contributed financially and socially to the neighborhood for well over 30 years during the good times and the not-so-good times. And we have four major concerns. One is traffic and congestion, noise and pollution, increased population, and personal safety and security. And I have copies of this for all of the members of the council. During large events such as the classic car auction and various festivals, the increase of vehicle traffic is abundant, and we find that it causes safety issues along with a neglect of common courtesy. Intersections become more difficult to cross, and collisions between pedestrians and vehicles are so common that it's joked about amongst the community. Parking becomes bedlam, as visitors believe they have the right to park almost anywhere they choose, and it is clear there is a lack of parking availability. During the Coachella Festival, we at the Deauville have often experienced visitors backyard camping, either in their cars, on El Segundo, or on our grassy areas. Additionally, there is increased litter, trash, drinking, disorderly conduct, urinating, vomiting, all on our grassy areas, as well as on the curb. Oh, man.
You're going to need to wrap up.
I will wrap up. Okay. The bottom line, the bottom line is, could painting the east curb of Caye El Segundo be a first step in eliminating some street parking problems that will surely be vast? And could increasing police presence in our neighborhoods that are right adjacent, we're the closest neighborhood? Could that be, could we possibly have that as a confirmed security?
Great. Thank you, and please leave that with the clerk so we can get it.
David Friedman, followed by Chaz McGlorry, and then Stephen Levine.
Good evening, Mayor Coors, Mayor Portem Holsteg, and council members, and congratulations on your elections and new council positions. My name is David Friedman. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission and its Standing Committee on Solar and Green Building, as well as chair of the Community Advisory Committee of Desert Community Energy. For the record, I am speaking in my individual capacity and not on behalf of the city. For the record, I am speaking in my individual capacity and not on behalf of those bodies. I would like to offer some comments on the arena project from a sustainability perspective. The project will generate substantial greenhouse gas emissions and solid waste and require large amounts of electricity, natural gas, and water, with GHG emissions increasing an estimated 1.8% above the expected baseline. In order to meet the goals in the city's Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Plan, the city should work closely with the tribe and Oakview to mitigate these environmental effects. These mitigation measures include minimizing lighting on the east and north sides of the project to minimize the impact on nearby residents, securing power from renewable energy sources by installing solar panels on the arena rooftop and parking lot, and participating in DCE's new 100% carbon-free option, using the airport overflow parking lot as a parking ride location, and working with Sunline to create a shuttle service from that lot, augmented bus service from downtown, and an express bus service on Route 111 for down-valley residents attending arena events, timing traffic lights at key intersections to reduce traffic backups and car idling, installing bike racks or a bike pen and EV charger stations at the project, establishing a zero-waste infrastructure and using reusable materials for onsite dining, and using high-efficiency irrigation systems and draw-tolerant landscaping as well as reclaimed water from the melting ice for irrigation. I urge the city, the tribe, and Oakview to work with each other and other stakeholders such as DCE and DWA to make the arena project a model for sustainable operations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chaz Milliore. I'd like to add on to the off-site parking and assigned paid parking, something what they do in LA with the Hollywood Bowl. I grew up, or not grew up, I lived in Simi Valley, which was 30 miles from the Hollywood Bowl. It was my pleasure to drive to Chatsworth, which was eight miles away, and get on a shuttle bus. The buses out here should be running till 2:30 a.m., so the people can visit downtown after the show. That's what I'd like to add to that. So there should be shuttle buses spread out through this valley, La Quinta, Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage. It'd be my pleasure to go out that way. Don't have to worry about traffic, could have a couple of drinks before the show, and no worries. Thank you.
Stephen Levine, followed by Michael Catan, and then Earl Hoover.
Not to rehash, a lot has been said. Let's go back to those, when it was commented about, people who come downtown, have dinner, then go to an event, and then come back maybe for a drink later. What about the people during those other four hours who are going to be looking for parking? It will not exist. I live over in Seoul, right across the street from here, and when there's an event here from the convention center, people drive around because they will not pay the $8 to go into the parking lot. So they're driving all the way around. Also, let's paint also then the curb going down Caballeros where there are signs saying, "No parking," and people do park there. That should be painted red. The Rowan Hotel will probably get built or something like it across the street, we're going to have congestion. Passed over very quickly tonight, twice, is that the tribe has plans to, still on the books, to increase the casino and a hotel project. Where is that going to be? 17 stories, 175 feet, 350 rooms. They haven't put a site down that I'm aware of, but what is that going to do to our area downtown? And lastly, how about another location? Out on the other side of Walmart, there is property there. I don't know if it's, very frankly, if it's a tribe property or not, but there used to be parking lots area up there. It's probably larger than what's proposed downtown. Let's move that facility out there where there could be adequate parking, and then have shuttle servers in and out of downtown for those who want to go to the restaurants.
Michael Catan, followed by Earl Hoover, followed by Mark Gohaus.
My name is Michael Khan. I've lived in this city for 44 years. I've heard a lot of micromanagement going on here. I think the bigger issue is one of lifestyle. Palm Springs is known for its lifestyle, and I think the issue is, what are we doing to our lifestyle? It's not the cost, it's not just the cost of fire protection, police, et cetera. That certainly is a big issue. It's the cost of what it's doing to our lives. People here moved to Palm Springs for a lifestyle. What are we doing to that lifestyle? I've seen the way we live here change over those 44 years. We used to come into Palm Springs and we only slowed down because we were supposed to. Now we slow down because we have to. What a change. Sorry, there's a police officer? Oh, dear. We're increasing the crowding, we're increasing our way of life to one of a big city. And I don't think that's what people want. I think people want the small town, the more relaxed lifestyle. Those of us who want to go to the big city, the LA, the what-have-you, have that option. We're here for a different reason. And we vote you folks in to try and help us retain that lifestyle. This arena doesn't belong in Section 14. I know you can't stop it, but I think we need to get the message out that it's the wrong thing in the wrong place. Thank you.
Earl Hoover, followed by Mark Gohaus, followed by Susan Ames.
Good evening. I'm Earl Hoover. I live on Andreas. I wish we could put that sketch up that the chief of police had of the two arenas side by side. That sketch demonstrates pretty much conclusively that this road net is not designed to accommodate a facility like this arena. The arena that they had up that he compared it to had six lanes, three in each direction going around. This has two in each direction going into neighborhoods, one of which is my neighborhood. That simply isn't an appropriate use at that location. Secondly, this has been a very rushed process. Your staff has not had an opportunity to really delve into this. They haven't had a chance to have an outside person take a look at the traffic studies. They haven't had a chance to do all the things that you would demand of a developer coming in on a piece of property over which you had zoning control. So I think really what needs to happen here is, they need to get together with these people, sort out everything they're going to sort out, and then we need another public hearing when they have arrived at what they think they're actually going to do as opposed to leaving all of these questions up in the air. We need a second look at this, and we need it rather badly. And thirdly, the Agua Caliente can build whatever they want on their property, but that doesn't mean you have to just fold your tent. They have to get sewer, and water, and roads, and use easements. Many of these things you control, and that project would not go ahead if you looked up and said, "You know, we're not going to support this," because people wouldn't come to that arena.
Mark Gohaus, followed by Susan Ames, followed by Dave Erickson.
Hi, my name is Mark Gohaus. I'm also in the Doeville condominiums, which are directly across the street. I will have a view of the arena. At this point, I know that it's going to happen, so I'd rather that it was successful, but my main concern is about parking. So I do have a recommendation, and I also have a suggestion for the council and staff. I think that your perspective is wrong. The responsibility of fixing the parking is the developer, not the city. And because of that, I do have a recommendation about it, but what I see happening is that the city's trying to come up with a way to fix the problem, and I don't think that having diagonal parking or meters is the solution to this. So my suggestion for the developer is to have contracts with the hotels and not to charge for parking, because what I hear is that the developers are looking at that as a profit potential. It's not going to work because people aren't going to pay when you can park downtown for free. So my suggestion is arrange for parking for your own customers, and don't destroy the customer experience, and don't destroy your own project by forcing people to pay for parking. And that's it. Also, same thing as what Sue Logan said for the Doeville, is that we're going to have more security problems than we already have. We have a little parking structure or parking space right in front that's free and has immediate access, so I'm wondering what help we're going to get for dealing with all of the security and parking issues that we're going to have. Thank you.
Susan Ames, followed by Dave Erickson, followed by Terri Jones.
I'm an owner at the Doeville, and I'm right on El Segundo. And I look right across, I'm going to be faced, I used to look at the bounds, or I do look at the bounds, I'm going to be faced with a 65-foot wall in front of me and lose my view, and all the other people are going to, all around, are going to have this big structure high up into the sky. This is a residential area, and it seems that traffic is important and all of the other things, but what about noise? There's going to be a lot of noise, people coming in and out, concerts, hockey games, cheers, all of that is going to destroy the ambience of the area, and all the neighbors as well are going to be affected by a lot of noise, which doesn't seem to be important. Thank you.
Dave Erickson, followed by Terri Jones, followed by Bruce Hoven. Not seeing Dave Erickson, so Terri Jones, and then Bruce Hoven.
Good evening, folks. I'd like to ask a question. I'd like to know, how many people in this room received this? In the mail? How many people received this in the mail?
Actually, you need to address the council, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is a map of the affected area from the building of the arena. So, according to this, my condo's right here on Alejo Road. So are they going to just bulldoze indiscriminately and widen Alejo Road? Are they going to take our front yards? I mean, it's already to a point where it takes us sometimes five to eight minutes to get onto Alejo Road from my own driveway. I only see that, I don't think there was a lot of thought put into this project at all. There's a huge tract of land on 10th where the other casino has a 17-story hotel. That's where the should go. Not here in town. We do not have the infrastructure. We do not have the roads. We do not have the money, and we don't have the ability to control these people. The tribe, they can do what they want, but we also cannot control the contractors. They are subject only to tribal, the tribe. You guys have an opportunity to stand up for the people who elected you and put you in office, and do your duty, and take care of us first and them last. We pay the taxes. We pay the taxes. We pay the taxes on our property. We pay the outrageous percentage of nine-whatever-it-is sales tax. So your job is to take care of us, and us first. Thank you.
Bruce Hoven, followed by Dr. Charles Gonzalez, followed by Danielle Cowan.
Good evening, council. Good evening, David, and good evening, staff. Thank you very, very much for a wonderful job in doing that staff report and the whole entire plan. I don't know how you got it done. It's amazing. I want to talk about parking. There's so many things to talk about, but I'm going to stick to parking for one second. I picture, without onsite parking, at least 1,600 spaces, which would cost $40 million to build $25,000 on a multi-level parking lot, that we are going to have every free parking lot we have behind all the businesses will now have gates going up and down. And you'll get a ticket, you'll go in and you'll have to buy something, and you get your ticket, and you can get out. Okay? I picture, you know, all of the restaurants being affected. I can't believe this fact of, oh, well, people will come down, they'll have dinner, they'll go to the arena for three hours, okay? If those cars are anywhere near Palm Canyon, then each restaurant's going to get one sitting, not two. So we're just substituting an earlier dinner for a non-dinner that can't get into town now. Finally, I want to just say that, Oakview, you're saying, you're bringing in a lot of additional dollars, okay, on weekends in the winter. Guess what? You don't know our town. That's not when we need the business. Our hotels are occupied over 90%, 95% on the weekends from February to the middle of May. So you're bringing in business that we already have. If you want to help us, come in the summer. Put your concerts in the summer. All I'd like to say finally in closing is that, you know, we don't want Palm Springs to all of a sudden have its arena night as a reputation. Okay? That's what's going to happen. It's going to chase people out, you know, who are locals and other types of things, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Charles Gonzalez, followed by Danielle Cowan, followed by David Boyle or Doyle.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Charles Gonzalez, and I'm a board-certified family physician and HIV medicine specialist. And just three weeks ago, I opened up a primary care clinic three blocks away from the stadium. As we know here in Palm Springs, this is a senior population, and many of my patients, some will have trouble with mobility. They use canes, walkers, but imagine if you could, but I plan to offer very quickly evening and even some Saturday appointments for access to their doctor. But imagine if you can't get to your doctor because you're diverted blocks away and you're in a cane. From what I read tonight, from what I listened to tonight, this developer that came, that was a fantasy report, which means they completely disregard our community. They are here for profit and one thing only, profit. All of their well wishes to us has nothing to do with this community but for their ability to raise revenue and profit. You guys are the very last stand that can fix and address these very serious parking concerns. I would like you guys to not be hoodwinked by these one percenters and their ability to drastically change this community. We are not Laguna. We are not Los Angeles. I left LA to get away from this. I hope you guys are not easily hoodwinked by this group. Thank you.
Danielle, followed by David Boyle, followed by Mark Strickland.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Cowan, and my backyard is in smack middle of the proposed site at the north end, it's along Alejo Road. And so the exact place where they're intending to put an in-road for the parking is really steps from my backyard. And it is, it's not as much that it's about the parking, it's about the circulation. And if the developer had looked, they would see that Alejo is only two lanes, and there's no left turn possibility there, and you're already planning three left turns within a two-block radius. And so it's just massive congestion, and I don't know that they really looked at those turn lanes in that area. It's a shame that the project is happening at all, but, and I totally agree and feel a little bit more heartened, I guess, that maybe we don't have to just take it, that perhaps there is an option for us to say, "No, this has to work for the community. You get to build on the tribal land, but we have the rest of the land." I also want to say that the parking management plan that puts the burden... I also want to say that the parking management plan that it, that puts the burden on the back of residents to have permits, it doesn't really change what happens the night of the parking because who's coming by to, to ticket those cars? Who's coming by to tow those cars? Who's going to get them out of my yard so I can actually use my driveway? And I, I do appreciate that buildings are to the south. I feel very badly for those who are going to be impacted. I think that there are some things that they can do, like the paid parking. That is a nightmare. I know that they get to have the benefit, but the rest of us are going to be burdened. They're going to come to my house, they're going to come to my neighbors' houses and they're going to park. And that is unfair and they should accept the responsibility and to say that we're putting 250 million in is simply not good enough. Thank you.
David Boyle, followed by Mark Strickland, followed by Frank Tyson.
Thank you. It's David Doyle and I am with the Movie Colony Neighborhood. And we share many of the concerns that have been voiced tonight, but we also understand and believe that this project is in its infancy. And we do have a great deal of confidence in our city council and in the management of our city. So we feel that these problems that we are going to be facing are going to be worked out. Let's have a positive attitude and let's make this thing work. Nobody moves closer to this arena than I do. I don't think. My wife Adrienne and I are within a couple of hundred yards of the arena, across the street from the parking. So we know that there's a lot to be considered here, but I'd like to have a positive attitude, place confidence in our city council and our city management and make this thing work. Thank you.
Mark Strickland, followed by Frank Tyson, followed by Kerry Brazeeman.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Mark Strickland. My partner and I are taxpayers, homeowners within the city of Palm Springs. I moved here a year and a half ago from Boston, where we have a real hockey team. And where the arena is located right next to the interstate. The comparisons made with Los Angeles, and I think I want to say the consultants, know your audience, do your research, we don't have large office buildings that we can just use the parking lots after hours. I think if we were to make an apt comparison with Palm Springs, one might look to a city such as, oh, I don't know, Santa Fe, which is a cultural center, which is a leisure vacation spot of international fame, where actually they spend their money building things like open-air arena opera houses. Think about it. We need culture in this city, not, not a second-rate hockey team. Furthermore, it's very clear in most of the discussion this evening, there was a lot of talk about the quality of life for our visitors and shopping, but I agree with what most of the residents have been saying this evening, the quality of life here, we moved here because of the quality of life here. We moved here because we don't have to scramble to pay parking meters. We moved here because we want to be able to enjoy the restaurants downtown. I can see it right now. This thing goes through, I'm going to have to look at a calendar, oh, what event is tonight? Guess we can't go downtown. What a shame for the taxpayers in the city that we feel like we have to keep away from the traffic jams, that we can't go downtown to enjoy our city in which we are paying taxes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Frank Tyson, followed by Kerry Brazeeman, followed by Joy Brown Meredith.
I don't know how many people were around about two, two decades ago, but the tribe had a plan at that point to do a Disney-type development in the same area. However, the people around there, because it's basically right in the middle of residential area, acted up and we had a very good tribal chief, Richard Belanovich, and he saw that it made a good, a good sense and he, he said, let's drop this plan. Now this plan today is infinitely worse. There's no question about it. It will definitely alter the city and basically destroy it the way we know it. And I think it's, the tribe is, can, I think one of the most important things that was said tonight among us, that there are other locations. They have all kinds of land between here and the freeway. And that's the solution, the simple solution. They have all the parking and everything. And the tribe has, has, has done that before. They, they changed the, the location of the cultural center from the mountains to Takuitz and now to, to where it is right now. And the tribe is not without, they have to also adhere to the Tribal Policy Act, which they need to have an exclusion from, that there is no significant environmental impact. How can anybody say there's no significant environmental impact? It's a disaster. And I think it's like putting an elephant in a telephone booth, you know?
Mr. Brazeeman, followed by Joy Brown Meredith, followed by David Feltman.
Sure. Good evening. Kerry Brazeeman with Palm Springs Together. We're very likely to be litigating, litigating against you folks. So if anybody out here wants to help us with litigation against the city potentially, please see me after this hearing or contact me through palm springs together dot org. I, I really want to like this. I live in section 14. It has the potential to be a lovely amenity, but following on JR's comment, I mean, the, the tone deaf joke by the sponsor, I mean, we have a former mayor of Palm Springs about to go on trial for bribery in a real estate deal and here we are joking about it, I mean, about tickets. Unbelievable. If we go to court, it won't be against the tribe, it'll be against you folks for ignoring SEQA and abusing your discretion. You know, our litigation, well, our litigation, as you've probably figured out too, it would be in parallel with the project. So if the project goes forward without the, without the SEQA review that you guys should be doing relative to what the city has authority and control over in terms of mitigations, I mean, that would be the basis of our litigation. And we know that even if the project goes forward, I mean, we can, we can litigate alongside of it. And the goal would be to hold the city accountable to ensure that we get SEQA-level mitigation, again, relative to what the city has authority and control over, in particular, public safety. At the end of the day, it's your job to protect us. We're counting on you to protect us. I'm hoping we don't have to sue you to force us, or excuse me, to force you to protect us. Thank you.
Joy Brown Meredith, followed by David Feltman, followed by George Champa.
I'm trying to absorb that information just now. My name is Joy Brown Meredith. I have owned a business in downtown Palm Springs for 32 years, one of the oldest businesses actually in Palm Springs somehow. And I just wanted to thank you all, first of all, thank the city staff. I don't know how you could have possibly gotten this done on a holiday week and everything. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight. And I know that, you know, it did say that this would be our only time to, to speak, but certainly I'm sure there will be many, many more discussions about this. It was just our time to speak before you had to get your report into the tribe. So I, I do want to say that I do support the tribe's rights on their tribal land. What I don't support is how it will affect the rest of us on the other land. Certainly the parking issues are a big thing, but also fire department, police department, there's just a lot of things involved here. And I think that the, the thought about lifestyle really does have a lot to do with it. I do think that there can be solutions though, so I'm not ready to throw this baby away with the bathwater. I think that there are some ways that we could work together with the tribe. We, we have forever, we've always been able to work with the tribe. Why would that stop now? And that we would be able to come up with the solutions that would make sense for everybody. And, you know, when we talk about parking, and I know it was mentioned many times about the merchants and parking, it's not about the merchants. It's about my customers. That's who it's about, is making sure that the experience that they have downtown and that they consider, they continue to have that Palm Springs vibe that is what made people want to come here and continues to make people want to come downtown and enjoy it. So I think that there are a lot of issues here, but I do feel very hopeful that we will be able to come up with some compromises that will work for everybody. This is not over yet. Thank you.
David Feltman.
Good evening, David Feltman. Nice to see you all again. I wanted to make two points tonight. One is, I think the developers were given a couple of talking points to say downtown hotels a whole bunch of times and they were also given talking points to say Uber a couple of times. And I think we really need to sort of do some education and other people have made that point. And one of the points is that 50%, a little bit less than 50% of our room nights are in short-term rentals, which means that they're dispersed all over the city. So the notion that this is all, you know, all the traffic is going to start at downtown hotels and migrate on these cute little shuttles to the arena is just fantasy. The other part is our hotels are not all centered downtown. About half of them, maybe 60%, I don't know the numbers, are downtown. And there's a whole stretch of Palm Canyon that have hotels all the way down to the Parker at the border of Cathedral City. So let's be more realistic in all our analysis for the city. The other point about Uber, has anybody been to, you know, away from the airport, like to a major city where you have four Ubers stopping on one side of the road and four Ubers stopping on the other side of the road? We're going to have hundreds of Ubers stopping on these two-lane roads with all the cars coming in for traffic, you know, for the parking and all that stuff. But, you know, the design that was put up here showed basically edge-to-edge building except for the VIP entrance and, and the loading zone. So what's going to happen when all these Ubers, which they say are going to be like just a handful, like less than 5%, I think you guys need to get into the nitty-gritty of how the traffic is actually going to flow. Not just that we're going to have shuttle buses and all these other, you know, sun, sunlight and all this stuff. The nitty-gritty, how will the traffic flow with the different kinds of vehicles that are going to be coming to this one spot? Thank you.
George Champa, followed by Brian Beach, followed by Sheri Diamond. And that's the last speaker card I have, so if you would like to speak, please bring a card up.
Good evening. I'm George Champa. I'm a 94-year-old World War II veteran. I served on D-Day in the Battle of the Bulge. I've made Palm Springs my home at first temporarily for about 45 years, permanently for the last 15 years. I've watched a sleepy village that's been worldwide known turn into more than a village. I think it has been developed enough. Enough is enough. I have four words. Why Palm Springs? That's three words. I didn't want to get caught on that. Why Palm Springs? There's a heck of a lot of desert around here, with some towns east of here. You know what? We're going to have some congestion pretty soon when Awa Kalianti tribe builds a new casino in Cathedral City. That's going to be in the way of my wife, who likes to go to Macy's. You realize the traffic we're going to have on 111, getting down to visit our friends east of here or, or getting to a big shopping center, larger than what we have here in Palm Springs, like a Macy's? You know, my wife calls me an endangered species. My doctor says I'm going to live to be about 112. I think I'll be around for maybe 110. And I'd like to enjoy those, those years. There's a lot of people in this audience that are like 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, they're going to live longer than me. But I expect them to enjoy their life here in the village of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Brian Beach, followed by Sheri Diamond.
Hi, I'm Brian Beach. My husband and I live in the Movie Colony. We're very affected by this. We're on the corner of Camino Real and Alejo. And yes, we have a traffic problem already. As you leave today, take a look at what happens with market night. Alejo is already busy. It's going to get busier. There are so many accidents at Alejo and Caballeros that it's unbelievable. And I think their solution was meters, widening Alejo, I guess that was our solution. And, and that's just not going to work. We already have too much traffic there. Adding a stoplight there isn't going to help. This is the wrong idea. You're going to route traffic down Alejo. You're talking about 650 spots of parking that are going to be directly across from a destination community, the Movie Colony. It's, it's not pretty. It's just not why we bought our homes in the Movie Colony. We bought our home for 125th or 1250th of his 250 million dollars. We put another 100, 1250th in. And now we may have to sell because we are already experiencing the growth of downtown. Now this is going to tax us too much. If you make Alejo four-lane, it pushes us out. There are no crosswalks between Caballeros and Indian Canyon. So if you live in the Movie Colony, you're taking your life in your hands to get across the street to the casino or anywhere else downtown unless you go through the Movie Colony, out through the one-way streets and down Indian or Palm. It's unfathomable how we bought a home in Palm Springs to be able to walk to downtown and yet they're changing the neighborhood. It's not good, but thank you very much.
The last speaker card is for Sheri Diamond.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having this, first of all. And I agree with a lot of the speakers who've already spoken. I'm kind of nervous to speak, but I did take some notes while I was listening and watching and I appreciate a lot of the input that I'm hearing from our city council. I moved to Palm Springs originally in 1972. I've seen all the differences and the changes, some good, some not so good. But I will have to read my notes to kind of express what I feel. First of all, I want to thank Chief Reyes because I think what he said was completely correct with the problems that we're going to encounter that in this city. Most of us moved here and some people have already expressed this, but most people have moved here to leave large cities, to leave, to live in a small, low-key, safe area. During the season, we have a huge amount of traffic driving into our city now. Can you imagine what the traffic will be like if this arena gets built? Many of us who own properties here pay property taxes to the city of Palm Springs, as well as those of us who pay a lot of money to live on the Indian leased land. I am curious to know what does the city do to benefit the full-time residents and not the tourists? I think the speakers are not realistic in their thinking. We are not a big city. This will change the culture of our city and I'm just curious, how many people in this audience would actually ever attend an ice hockey game?
Mayor Coors, I have no other speaker cards.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, we'll close the public comment period. I really want to thank everyone for sharing their input and it's greatly appreciated. Let's take a 10-minute recess, bathroom break, and then we'll continue the meeting. So thank you, everyone. So thank you, everyone.
If everyone could grab seats, please. So before we move into discussion and questions from council, given a number of the comments, I appreciate if maybe city attorney, if you're the appropriate person, just to discuss, there are some comments that the city council could somehow stop this or not, deliver utilities, which, things like that. Can you just talk about what exactly our rights are and aren't? So, we understand and the public understands?
Absolutely. So, there's a couple of things. There were a number of comments, and I would refer you back to our land use agreement, and that agreement requires us or allows us to, and allows the tribe, to cooperate in these projects, and reviewing them and providing comments. It does not give us authority. The agreement is very clear that the tribe maintains its sovereignty, and specifically says that the agreement deals only with consultation, and process in which the city is being given the opportunity to review and comment. And so that's what we're here to do. The city does not have the authority, as we discussed earlier, to stop the project. There's been some assertions that through SEQA or through failure, refusing to provide water or sewer, or those types of services, that we would be able to delay or stop the project. Those are ministerial actions, they're not discretionary actions, and so we really don't have the ability as a municipal service, utility service provider, say for the sewer, to not provide sewer service. One of the conditions in the resolution is a request or desire for a sewer capacity study to be done, and so those are things that we would expect to be handled, and so we would be able to look at the sewer capacity to ensure that we have capacity, but assuming that that's met, we would not have the ability to not issue sewer service, or allow them to connect to the sewer. So, we are limited in our abilities to stop this project.
Okay, thank you. And just one comment, and then I'll turn over the rest to council first. You know, tonight, we had basically 30 days from when we got this report to make our recommendations, and we want to have a public meeting to get as much public input as possible, and really appreciate everyone who came forward. You know, one of the things in the staff report, and council member Holstich and I have been working on this, sort of initially on our capacity as the legal subcommittee, is that we have to do this one now to move forward, but when it comes to the mitigation issues, parking and traffic, it's really important, and the city intends to have numerous stakeholder meetings with the neighborhoods, with the merchants, to get more input on those issues. So, this is the first of what will be a number of meetings on those issues. I just wanted people to let know, at least from the city council's viewpoint. And I know, in talking with Oakview, they want to be part of meetings to get that input as well. So, it's going to be really important that we continue that process as we go forward, but tonight is really about council reviewing the recommendations from staff weighing in, and ultimately approving a set of recommendations that we will present to the tribe and to Oakview, which we're going to ask them to consider regarding this project. So, with that, council member, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, before you continue, if I could just, there was one additional issue that you had asked about that I failed to respond to, which was the SEQA issue. So, SEQA only applies when we have a discretionary action. This is not a project where we have discretionary action. We're providing recommendations, basically, but we do not have any approval rights, and so there is no ability for us to do SEQA on this project.
Great. Thank you. So, I'll go first. Councilmember Middleton.
I've been going first a lot tonight, but it's my turn for that. So, I do have a number of comments to make, and while the audience is much lighter than it was when we started, the first comment that I want to make is to thank everyone who came out this evening. Once again, Palm Springs has demonstrated that we are an incredibly involved community, and that we care very deeply and very passionately about our city and our community and the quality of life that we all have here, and that was certainly heard very loud and clear. I also want to, and I think this is clearly going to be a theme for all of us on the dais, is to thank the staff. The staff report, the work that was done incredibly quickly, was absolutely first rate, and I am just deeply appreciative. The questions that I had were generally right there, and this was good work. One of the things that we like to talk about in Palm Springs is we're a place like nowhere else. Part of that has to do with our history with Yagua Caliente Band of Kewee Indians, and anyone who is honest in their review of that history knows that there are times that we have much to be ashamed of, and much to be proud of as well. But that relationship that we have with the tribe is something that's very unique in this city. It imposes upon us an incredible obligation to work with a sovereign nation. Very few municipalities have that obligation of working so closely with a sovereign nation. Rightfully, the tribe is incredibly protective of its sovereignty, and respectfully, each and every one of us, I believe, on this dais, understand that sovereignty and respect it as well. That said, we also have obligations of representation, and there are some things that when it comes to this project, we can do, and other things that we cannot do. The areas in which we need to concentrate our energy as a city, come back to public safety, to the services, to the health and safety of the community, the compatibility of this project, and lastly, the fiscal impact. We can't impose upon the general fund the cost of this, of the work that has to go in, in providing the public safety and other services that are necessary for any private venture to prosper.[705.01][705.01](APPLAUSE) I am frequently appreciative of our fire chief and our police chief, no more so than I am this evening. The work that they did, the analysis, is something that I believe is accurate in terms of what will be needed for staffing for a project of this nature to be successful, and we all want it to be successful. We live in very harrowing times. We all know that every community in this country is at risk for a shooter and for some other individual intent on doing great harm to a number of people, and we cannot, under any circumstances, take a risk with being light or just barely enough when it comes to our public safety services. Nothing would be more detrimental, not only to this project, but to the city as a whole, if we were to not do what was absolutely necessary when it came to public safety. I believe the parking and traffic evaluation of city staff that shows almost 1,600 more spaces to be needed is probably much closer to accuracy than what I saw in the report from Oakview and their advisors. I think this is something that we can work through and that we can resolve. As a member of the Sunline Board of Directors, I believe that public transportation has to be a critical and important part of this, and I know that Oakview has done an incredible job in a very short period of time of getting out and meeting with individuals in the community, but I confirmed again this afternoon that so far, no one from the developer has reached out to the executive director of our local transportation agency. That needs to change. I've already expressed my concerns when it comes to Uber and Lyft, and what the ultimate impacts are going to be. Again, I think those are resolvable issues, and I appreciate the attitude with which Oakview has come before us. Again, they're getting ready to spend $250 million in our community. Much of that work needs to go to individuals who live here already, most particularly individuals who live here already and are living in some of the economic margins. One of our speakers spoke of local hiring. That is incredibly important. Also important in a community such as this is that hiring be done wherever possible, with union labor paying prevailing wages. Last thing I want to say is to come back to, again, our relationship with Yagua Caliente Band of Kewee Indians. We have a unique agreement with the tribe. Other cities have tried to get with their local tribes agreements similar to what we have, and have generally failed because the tribes in those communities were unwilling to form the kinds of agreements and partnerships that we've been able to form in this city. As a former member of the Planning Commission, we had great discretion in making judgments using our zoning, our planning, our building rules over projects that were being done on Indian land. Many times, I know we made decisions that tribal leaders would have made different decisions. Not once, since this agreement has been in place, has the tribe invoked their right to change a decision that we made on land owned by Alatis or by the tribe. This goes to the extent of cooperation that we have received from the Yagua Caliente Band of Kewee Indians, and it is up to us to continue that cooperation. Thank you.[1044.01][1044.01](APPLAUSE)
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Okay, councilmember Watts?
Thank you, Lisa. That was very eloquent, and I agree just for, with what you said, and I appreciate what you said. I too, though, want to thank everyone that came tonight to speak, and I want to thank everyone that wrote letters to us as well, and I want to thank the applicant for being here and taking this very seriously. I appreciate all of that as part of the public testimony. They are a sovereign nation, and in my role, in my life here in the city of Palm Springs, I have seen the tribe put conditions on private developments that are on Alati land, and I have never seen our city council overturn any of those conditions that the tribe has put on to various development projects. So, I do think that there's a level of cooperation and a level of respect that exists between the tribe and the city of Palm Springs at this point, that I think we need, through this project, need to bolster and foster and continue, and I like when ownership said, "They're here to be great neighbors," and this is just the beginning of a great relationship. And I think the relationship is what's going to be important here on everything. I am very proud, and I think our entire city is very proud to have our own police and our own fire. I think it is a luxury that we have, and I think it's a luxury that we want to maintain. Thus, I think putting in any sort of facility, be it an arena or anything else, that strains that relationship and that pride that we have, really does need to be mitigated to the best of the ability we can. With that, we have a resolution in front of us, and when we get to the point, I would just like to make a few changes to that resolution, because this really is about conformity at this point, and I think that the staff has been very clear that there are parts of this development project that are not conforming, as if it were to be built within the city of Palm Springs jurisdiction itself. So, I'd just like, as we get to that point, make a couple amendments to that resolution. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Garner.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate getting to hear what everyone has to say in this room, and that you took the time to be here tonight and to stay here. I think that the biggest thing about this is, a lot of your concerns are our concerns and the city's concerns, and you've heard that and you saw that in the city's report. We do want to make sure that we're, you know, funding our police and fire. You know, they already need to be funded at a higher level, and so this creates even more of a reason to do so. And I think a lot of the things that the staff has come up with for recommendations for this project are really positive things for us, and ways that we can work together. And that's really what I think everybody needs to be thinking about when we're coming forward with this, is that we have to work together to make sure that this is, this project is successful for all of us. And I think that the tribe has a history of putting forth projects that are successful, and we've seen how much they are committed to the community in Palm Springs. This is their land, all of it, even though some of it has been designated as ours, but it was always theirs. And so, we have developed a great relationship with them, and I think that in order to honor that relationship, we need to be positive when we're moving forward with these projects. And I want to make a note, too, as somebody who grew up here, I've always been such a big fan of the tribe's commitment to the community and what they've done for our students. I know that I would not have been able to play varsity sports at Palm Springs High School without the support of the tribe, because the tribe has donated so many, so much money and resources to our schools. So, I want to just agree with councilmember Middleton when her comments related to making sure that we are supporting our local residents when we're hiring for this project, as well as making sure that we are in conversation regarding public transportation. I think that can be a huge help in making sure that we are mitigating our traffic problems as much as possible. And I do want to make a point to say that I appreciate that Oakview mentioned several times that this is an ongoing conversation, and I think that what I want to see is that we are in communication with the tribe, with Oakview, with the city, that we are always talking about this as it moves forward. This project won't be completed for another few years, and we need to take advantage of all of this time, and I think monthly meetings were even stated by all of you, and I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
May I approach him, Holstich? Do you want to go?
You want to go next?
Up to you. No, it's up to you.
I can go. Thank you. Thank you to our staff, and thank you to our community, and thank you to Oakview Group for being here, and everyone who's engaged in this public process with us tonight. This is what democracy looks like here, and it's not always pretty, and it's, you know, not always fun, but this is the important work that the people of Palm Springs elected us to do with our community, together here, with our partners, like the tribe, to sort out these hard issues and complicated issues, and I always say, that's why you pay us the big bucks, to figure that out here together as a community, and I say that in jest, but grateful for the opportunity. I think Palm Springs is not afraid of taking on hard issues. We're not afraid of this type of project. I think that we've worked hard as a community as we've faced downtown development, that I am having, kind of harking back to some of those initial meetings, of the tone and the tenor and the fear for our quality of life, which all of us, and you heard today, our residents value more than probably anything else. We all, if we're born here, or we are, some people are stuck here, some people choose to be here and have the privilege to move here and flee other places, but we all stay and we all live here for the quality of life. So, I'm grateful for our residents for expressing that today. We've taken on the downtown project, we've taken on vacation rentals, again, harking back to tone and tenor that vacation rentals would destroy our community. And the city council, and councils before us, and our city staff especially, our city manager, who's been here for nearly 20 years, has addressed those issues and solved them, and really figured it out, and we, it is a balance, maintaining our quality of life for our residents and the economic growth that many of our residents depend on to make a living here in Palm Springs. And so, that's the balance that we get to find in this type of work. I want to thank, so thank you to the residents, and thank you to Oakview Group. Welcome to Palm Springs. This isn't quite the Palm Springs welcome, I think, that we normally give our visitors, but I think that, I want to, I do want to thank you. I think there are residents here in our community, and I've heard a lot in the community, people, people's excitement about this project, excitement about the vision and the boldness to bring a project like this to the tribe and to the city of Palm Springs and the surrounding areas for the tribal land. I think it's exciting, and it's an important and pivotal moment in Palm Springs history, and you're a part of that. I agree with everything councilmember Middleton said. She always says it better than I. That's why I have her go first, and then I just say, "I agree."[1566.01][1566.01](LAUGHING) You know, but I think here, we're dealing with our tribal partners, who are a sovereign nation. We are here to do a conformity report, which is based on the compact and the land use agreement with the tribe, and so while we got requests to shut down this project, or do other things that we could normally do if it were on city land, it is not, and we respect and need the partnership of the tribe moving forward. The tribe's success and the success of this project is the city's success, and vice versa, and we need each other. And I think what you heard from our community is, we need to work together, and we need to work together better to address some of these concerns that our residents and our community has raised, and also the exciting opportunities of this project that I've also heard raised, though less so tonight, but I've heard it from many people in talking about this and getting community feedback. But you've seen to Oakview Group, you've seen firsthand how engaged and committed our residents are to the city and to our community, together with the tribe. I hope that you listen to their feedback tonight, and incorporate it, and incorporate the requests of the city to make this the great project that I really know it can be. I'm looking forward to working together and collaboration, and this is the first time, and I think what you're experiencing some of is that our residents and our communities used to projects being more fully baked than this, because we, it comes to us at a later process, and we haven't been able to give that input until now, and so that's what you're seeing. But you heard from our community that quality of life is important, that public safety is important, that sustainability and the climate impacts of this project are important to our city. We have responsibilities under state law to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, to reduce our waste, and so we hope that we'll work together on those issues. We heard that local hire, I agree, is incredibly important. We desperately need jobs in Palm Springs. We need high-paying, good jobs. I saw in the economic report, I haven't seen a full report, but that there are some 60 to 70, it looks like, full-time employees, and then a large number of part-time and temporary employees. We need real good-paying jobs for people who live here, who are going to serve this community, because we take care of those people. We provide with the county social, you know, social services, anti-poverty, economic development, work together. Really excited about the economic impact report, very much looking forward to reading a full and comprehensive report. I think that's the information that our community is missing so we can fully understand how this will impact our city, and what it will bring, and what are the benefits. And today, unfortunately, we only talked about, I have a lot of the negatives, which is, again, not the tone necessarily, that I think we want to look at a fair and balanced view. We just need that economic data from you so that we can do that together. So, in terms of next steps, and I also have some requests. So in terms of next steps, and I also have some requests about the conditions, I asked that we look at a process going forward that we can really implement so that we can negotiate these items and the mitigation together. And I heard you, Oakview Group, say that you're not asking the city or a governmental agency other than with the tribe's help and support to subsidize this project, and that's really important. I was born and raised in Sacramento, and the city just did a huge project and asked taxpayers for support. However, the city is in the place that we are, in part subsidizing some of this project because of the loss of quality of life for parking and traffic on our residents, the costs of public safety that we do not, have not budgeted for, the costs that are outlined. And I think that there's other costs that just we haven't addressed yet. So looking forward to working in collaboration. It's an incredibly important project in and around the city of Palm Springs and for our entire community, so I very much look forward to being a part of this process. For my council colleagues, do you want to go through and talk about the conditions and then kind of make some edits to that? I know you have comments as well before we do that, so I'll hold those. Thank you.
So I really appreciate everyone's comments. We're all on a pretty similar page on this, it sounds like, and, you know, I sort of want to start just with the relationship with the tribe because, you know, to some of the points that were made, this was all tribal land. So sometimes when we're thinking about comments that, you know, they shouldn't be doing what they want on their land, we're on a lot of what was their land. And we're unique, I think, in the country where we have the city government and a tribal government sharing a city the way we do with these square-mile blocks that were set up because of a railroad that really creates something that's unique. And a city that developed into actually a city, which it wasn't much at the time, where you have your core downtown business district really half belonging to the city, immediately neighboring, half belonging to the tribe. And that, no doubt, creates some challenges, but it gives us some amazing opportunities, too. And it's really important that we don't lose sight of that. You know, you can look at the projects that the tribe is currently doing downtown, the cultural center and the spa. They're beautiful projects, and they're going to add such benefit to our city and our residents. And to have that history here is just so important for us. And we're fortunate that we do have the relationship we now do with the tribe where they allow us to make recommendations, they allow us to weigh in. It's something tribes don't have to do, and it's really important. We appreciate that and truly honor their sovereignty, the way we would want the land that is the city's land to be honored and wouldn't want another government to come in and try and tell us what we're doing on our portion of the land that is actually city land. So I just think it's important that we keep that in mind. I appreciate, as passionately as people feel, people overwhelmingly were respectful tonight, and that really goes a long way in this conversation. I also think that a lot of what is coming out tonight is, it feels to many of us that this was sort of dropped in our laps, something that obviously has been in the works for a long time. And there had not been an opportunity provided to residents to give feedback, and it's really important now that we have this information that we did that. And I think this kind of turnout tonight, I think, demonstrates that our community wants input on this. And the most important things we can do, and it was really important in the staff report, is work on mitigating the concerns. So for me, as with anything, when it's something we don't have true say in whether it happens or not, I want to focus on the positives and really focus in a big way on mitigating the negatives. And that's what we're starting to do tonight, and we need to do throughout this process. And I hope people realize the benefits that this arena can bring. Whether people would choose it or not, if it's going to happen, I do want to focus on some of the benefits, the concerts, the sporting events, that will be a benefit. It will be an economic driver. It will provide jobs. But it will also create traffic, parking, and public safety issues. Any project this size will and does. So the most important thing, I think, for a council we can do is, now that this process has started, is to work really closely with the tribe and Oakview Group to do that mitigation, to address the concerns of residents, and have regular meetings with our residents, especially the majority of people here who are in the neighborhoods immediately surrounding the arena. It's not everyone here, but that is the majority of people here who live within walking distance of the arena. If you live within a mile of arena and it's 20 minutes, like me, you're going to walk, and people are going to park. So those are the kind of things we need to discuss. This is slated to open in 19 months, which gives us a lot of time, but that will go quickly if we don't start right away, to work on parking and traffic and public safety. The only thing I want to add is, and the tribe is not present, but currently the city, and it's in the staff report, provides and funds police, fire, emergency, medical on tribal property. And that's not true everywhere. In Potchenga, near San Diego, I think they have their own fire department, 28-person fire department. The tribe used to fund over $1 million a year in public safety through an old gaming compact. Those were negotiated under Governor Schwarzenegger, and that stopped. And so those costs are absorbed by us now. And so doing that work with the tribe and Oakview is going to be so critical in addressing the cost to make sure this works because Oakview and the tribe are putting in, as we've all heard, a quarter of a billion dollars, and they need this to work. They need parking to work. They need traffic to work. They need public safety to be effective, and so does the city. And the best way to make that happen is to work together in a partnership. And there will be disagreements along the way, there always are, but to do it in a respectful way with as much input from the public as possible to achieve a really good result for everyone. I have some recommendations as well, so maybe we just have open mic and sort of go through them. I just have a few which I'll add, and some I think Mayor Protem Holstich said, but I do think we need some regular meetings. The first one is, I just think the developer and city staff, as the construction goes on, just need to have regular meetings, whether they're bimonthly or monthly, just to check in. I think that would be really important, and might be a recommendation we have. I think coming up with an ad hoc subcommittee, as we have, hopefully with representatives of the Oakview Group and one or two representatives of the tribal council that could meet, whether it's monthly or quarterly, to just make sure we're communicating and checking in. I think that's just so important as we go through the process. I think setting up a regular series of stakeholder meetings, some need to be larger meetings like this, but really meetings with each of the neighborhoods that is in the area and with the downtown merchants, I think is going to be really important as we do this. And I like whether it's the Oakview Group, the tribe, however, you know, the team wants to move forward, that their representatives are there, with representatives from the subcommittee and city staff to meet and get that input and really brainstorm solutions. I agree on local hiring. We'd really like to see a local hiring plan put forward and negotiated to really make it preference. You're not going to do all local hiring, but to give preference for local residents. To keep those jobs here is really important and needed, and we'd really like to see that. And just, you know, and we've talked a lot on parking, but one thing I would like at least looked at is if the city's going to provide any lot for parking and shuttles, which have been talked about a little, other than during the holiday season, we have a lot of space at the airport. And there could be the potential to work out something where people who park there wouldn't pay for parking, and Oakview would provide a free shuttle to them as an incentive to get people further away from downtown. And it's not very far, actually. So I'd like that, just one of the things as we work on parking. And the last thing on parking is to really work with our parking consultant and yours together, now that they've both looked at it, one in season, one not in season, to really see if we can work together to come up with some really smart solutions and ways to move this forward. But I appreciate the Oakview Group coming and presenting tonight. I appreciate your willingness to have regular meetings and to make this as successful as possible for you and for our residents. So with that, did you have other?
Sir.
Yeah, please.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I just want to look at the resolution. I was going to add a couple of things to the resolution. To item G on the resolution, it says the city council has concluded, oh, I'm sorry, page four of the resolution. The city council has concluded that based on the information presented, the following issues merit further discussion. I would add traffic in there. Traffic isn't put in there, and the parking's put in there, but not traffic. I would just add traffic to that. Under section five, it says pending approval of the project by tribal council, city staff shall work in concert with the tribal staff to implement a parking management plan and the transportation management plan as a means to mitigate the impacts of the project. I would add, along with building additional parking. I might add a separate section that says the city council finds significant impacts that need to be mitigated with this project. I might add another section, section, I guess, B6, 7. It says add a minimum, implement the recommendations in the staff report dated December 5, 2005, excuse me, December 5, 2019. And then the last one is to add monthly meetings, or monthly meetings, add a hoc subcommittee and stakeholder meetings.
Did you have one? Yeah, please. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said so far in terms of adding. I would like to as well add that this project should be compliant with the sustainability goals that Mr. Friedman outlined, and that it should include solar. I would also like to add that public transportation needs to be a critical part of the traffic and parking mitigation programs. The last I would add is, and this reference something that Mr. Lewicki spoke of, and that is the need for a planning program to identify events that are taking place so that as this project is in its full life, that we are looking at the calendar on a regular basis to make sure that events occurring at the convention center, that are occurring at the arena, that will be occurring downtown, that we have a coordination of those so as to mitigate the possibility of multiple events taking place at the same time.
I have one or two additional. I agree with everything that's been said. I may just add in requesting local hiring and thinking about ensuring people are receiving living wages in these jobs. I'd also ask to look at local vendors and local businesses. We have incredible local and unique businesses in Palm Springs, and that's one thing we've learned through our airport, is really bringing the unique culture of Palm Springs to vending and providing those opportunities to our residents and our merchants. I just wanted to flag other issues that I heard the community and residents in public comment raise that I didn't necessarily, and they didn't see addressed. So just asking staff to review the following issues and review if we need any conditions or recommendations on those issues. So in public comment, people raised pedestrian safety. I heard people raise proper lighting for pedestrians and for traffic. I heard people raise noise impacts and pedestrian safety, so things like crosswalks. And I heard people talk about, which we'll get into more in depth as we have a more comprehensive plan, but carve-outs and thoughts towards Uber and Lyft and Rideshare locations and all of that that will be considered as we move forward. Also, we had heard and talked a little bit about the developer providing security, traffic, and pedestrian control for the project. Again, I'm concerned about what the city is going to have to pay for in terms of administering programs and providing that. So we just need clarity around what the city will provide and what the developer or the tribe will provide. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Along the lines with traffic and parking, I'd be interested to see if there's an ability for us to have a resident parking structure, not a parking structure, but a parking program. I understand if we were to have meters downtown, for instance, or something like that, is there a possibility of allowing residents to not have to pay for those spots? But that's just something to consider as we kind of move forward with this because I agree with everyone that I really like my free parking in Palm Springs.
Okay. Any other comments?
On the last page, we have police department, fire department conditions, and I think that goes to the issue of ensuring that the cost for additional police, fire services not be a burden to the city. I think we need to expand that to ensure that all of the traffic mitigation and parking enforcement, all of the police and fire, that it is the will of the city council, that it is not an obligation of the general fund to pay for any additional costs.
So given the legal subcommittee's been working on this, do we just keep that, or do we appoint an ad hoc subcommittee to work on this project? In large parts of the public knows who's the subcommittee.
Well, I would suggest, since they're already there, at least we can continue. I mean, it could be a separate ad hoc, or you could continue with a legal at this point.
Okay. I think it makes sense to make it a separate ad hoc because then we have a list on the website, and people know which council members are engaging in that. Obviously, everyone will be involved in this, and people should reach out to everyone, but I think it's probably worth having an ad hoc on this.
So then we would include that in the subcommittee assignments that will be in the first meeting then in January.
Perfect. Yeah. And in the meantime, we'll continue working on it at this level. So if there's nothing else, I'm looking at Flynn. Do you have everything you need?
Yes, I believe I do. So we'll go ahead and make those changes as have been recommended by the council to both the resolution and the conditions of approval.
Okay. So we need a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
A second. Okay.
And that's a motion to adopt the resolution as amended by all of the comments.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Corriss?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion passes five to zero. The next city council meeting will be held on Thursday, December 19, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council Chamber, and we will adjourn in honor of Dennis Woods spending his birthday with all of us tonight. So happy birthday, Dennis.